Agents, if you will, all please rise.
Father, we thank you for pulling us together again here this evening to do the business of the town. We ask that you be with us and everyone in attendance here tonight to let the information we get tonight be best for the town of Hope Mills and our residents. We ask, Father, that you keep an eye on and watch over our soldiers all around the world and that you bring them back home safely. We ask you to bless in each and every one of the staff, the first responders, and this board. We'll never fail to give you the praise. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Is there anything that you'd like to add to the agenda this evening? If not, then have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, tonight we have a presentation, and this is for the purpose of receiving the presentation and consideration discussion of the findings of the comprehensive plan and proposed master plan for the golf course. And this is from the McAdams firm, and I'll turn it over to Rachel Carter.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, thank you for taking the time this evening to be here. I know this is a special session, so I do appreciate your presence. We've been working with town staff and the community for about eight months now, and we have the results of the master plan. We presented a few months ago the initial findings, and today we'll be sharing the recommendations of the draft recommendations of the master plan. And the intent or our overall objective is to share these with you and to receive any feedback, comments, and answer any questions you might have. Any comments or questions today that we receive will be taken into consideration, and the final master plan will incorporate and address anything from tonight's meeting along with a recreation advisory board meeting and a public input meeting forthcoming later this month. So the first half of the presentation is going to be the draft recommendations for the master plan, and the second half of the presentation is going to be the draft concept plans for the golf course park.
Rachel, I think it's a little confusing because we've got a master plan and a comprehensive plan going on simultaneously or whatever.
Sure.
So this is really what we refer to as the comprehensive plan we're talking about tonight, correct?
Okay. Yep, yep. So part one, goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, and then part two, the golf course, and we do have some recommendations for municipal park as well, and so those are site master plans versus townwide comprehensive plans.
Yes, want the press to be clear on that?
Okay, great. Does that answer the cleared up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So part one, the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, and again, we focused in on a few key focus areas for the plan, and that's what I'm going to be focusing on this evening. That's the framework for the plan and the way that we've set up the recommendations. So parkland is our first key focus area, and our first goal, and again, this is townwide, so comprehensive, so for all of the parks, we're recommending the town refresh the physical condition of existing parks to enhance user experience. So objective 1.1 is to improve the overall safety and appropriate use of parks. And anything you see here in red are things that the town is already doing. So we love it when we see or we're making recommendations and our client is already starting to implement and work on things. That shows us that they're incredibly motivated and excited to make change and improve things here. So in order to address improving overall safety and appropriate use of parks, we're recommending a few strategies. The first is to apply SEPTED principles where possible. And for those of you not familiar with SEPTED, it's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And we will be providing a written document that goes into detail about all of these strategies. So we do describe what SEPTED principles are. They're very much an eyes-on-the-straight approach, improving the physical quality and character of a space to show community pride, getting more people involved in parks, recreation, being present. And then the second strategy is installing security cameras at key facilities, which the town has already purchased some cameras, and within the next year, they're planning to decide where all those security cameras will actually be located and if any additional need to be purchased. We are recommending that the program and fee structure be updated to discourage undesired activity. So this means when you have unprogrammed spaces, people can kind of come and go at all hours. If you program a certain space at a certain time, and you must register for it or you must pay a fee, that is going to encourage proper use of the park and its amenities at the proper time and also discourage undesirable activity. We're recommending the town partner with the local police department or other programs and partners to program amenities that currently attract illicit behavior. So if a certain amenity isn't being used in the way that you want it to, whether that's a portion of a park, or a basketball court, or a trail, we're suggesting that you partner with someone who's taking the lead in a leadership role within the community. Have them out in the community, at the site, programming and interacting with your community and with people who are registering for some of these programs. And improve the visual appearance of parks to communicate community pride. So objective 1.2 is to upgrade, expand, or repurpose outdated parks and amenities with those meeting current recreation trends and community need. So if you recall, we talked about something in the last meeting called the priority investment rating, and that was a result of the statistically valid survey. Those are the things that the town should focus on in terms of what the need, what the demand is for certain amenities within parks. So the top PIR ratings were aquatics, nature trails, indoor fitness and exercise facilities, splash pad, and a greenway trail system. So when you're thinking about repurposing an old space or constructing new, these are the things that your community says both that there aren't enough of and there's a big demand for. Again, based on the programming, PIR, so we did a PIR for facilities and one for programming. And we need to look at the programming because you want your facilities to support the programs that the community wants. So we looked at both youth and adult programs from a PIR perspective, and we want to have facilities that support the desired programs, which include outdoor adventure, family event space, amphitheater, and again, aquatics. So given the special populations here and the veterans' community, there's a greater need for all-inclusive spaces and amenities. So when we are building or repurposing facilities, we want to focus on amenities such as play equipment or sensory gardens, different types of facilities and amenities that speak towards people with disabilities and the greater veterans' community. And then with the senior populations and ethnic composition expected to increase, there is a need for additional attention to all-inclusive facilities, placemaking, and multi-generational amenities. And so one thing the report goes into more detail about is this idea of placemaking, multi-generational amenities, and all-inclusive. So when we're talking about all-inclusive, it really means providing amenities that have no barriers regardless of ability level, regardless of race, regardless of income, regardless of car or non-car household. And throughout the master plan, there's a series of strategies that are also presented this evening that will help you achieve that. And this idea of placemaking, which is really about integrating the community and public art and the physical characteristics and qualities that make Hope Mills such a special place into your parks and into the public spaces that people interact with. Objective 1.3 is to collaborate with the Public Works Director to finalize the ADA transition plan. We realized during our detailed park evaluations that there are some noncompliance issues with regard to the Americans with Disability Act. It's my understanding that the Public Works Director is already preparing an ADA transition plan, and we're suggesting that the Park and Rec Department just collaborate with the director, and I believe this is already underway, to make sure that parks are certainly included as part of that ADA transition plan. So I think you're set with that objective and that strategy?
Rachel.
Yes, sir.
Because I was on the board in '12 and '13, and we resolved a situation then on a five-year plan, so I guess something else came up. I don't know what else it was, but maybe Commissioner Legg or the mayor might. I'm not knowledgeable of anything else.
I don't know how we got away from those plans.
We have not. We've implemented what was instructed. We were sued, and part of the settlement was they told us what we needed to do within, I believe it was a five-year plan. I think we've completed that ahead of schedule, but that was very limited in the scope of what we have to do. It was only, I think it only involved a few specific areas. It didn't involve the entire facilities that we own.
These are things we're doing voluntarily, these other items.
These other items?
That Rachel speaks of.
I'm sorry?
The things that Rachel's speaking of here are we are voluntarily making these changes.
Moving forward, there's nothing voluntary. We have to do it. We've been told by the federal government. They have transitioned everything ADA compliant to the towns. So we're going to have to...
It wasn't part of the resolution we did in '12 and '13?
No, no. This is separate. What she's talking about is separate.
Okay. I just needed some clarification on that.
Yeah.
And I'm going to ask the board to take notes so we don't interrupt. I know when you're making a presentation, it's difficult to keep the momentum going. So if you have a question, if you'll write it down in that section, then when we go back, you can ask questions. That way we won't interrupt, so.
No worries.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Sure. And I know this is a lot to go through, so I appreciate your attention and patience while I get through it here. Objective 1.4 is to improve the overall aesthetics, visual appeal, and character of the park system. The first item is to develop a park signage master plan. When the branding effort is complete, and replace all park signage with new consistent signage, that's one way to get your brand out into the public. It's one way to foster that feeling of community pride through visual appearance in your parks, which again discourages a lot of illicit behavior, undesired behavior at some of your parks. And it's my understanding that the branding effort's already underway and that there've already been some efforts to get a plan together for the park signage. Establishing landscape guidelines, including desired plant palette for all three maintenance levels within each park. We talk about these maintenance levels, and it's really a way for the maintenance team to be able to understand at a given park, what's a maintenance one, which is all your really high visible areas, your entrance ways, your foundation plants around the buildings, the things you want to look really nice and keep well-maintained, and that put an extra burden on the maintenance team. And then level three is more natural areas, and these can directly translate into hours that a maintenance team has to put towards maintenance of your individual parks. But it also gives you a very consistent and visual appealing way to approach your plant material, make sure that you're using native or adapted plant material, and keep the physical appearance up throughout the community through your parks. Develop a site furnishings palette and replace outdated furnishings at each park. Again, that goes back to the branding, and when people arrive, how do they know that they're at a Town of Hope Mills parks? It's the signage, it's the furnishings, it's the landscaping. Incorporate aspects of public art, placemaking, and cultural identity into each park through the design process. So you see the last bullet is adopt a 1% public art policy. That mandates that 1% of any construction budget for new parks or renovated parks is dedicated to public art. And it's our understanding that you have a current partnership with Pembroke, and they do have some public art pieces, but they are leased or donated for a period of time, and that if we don't purchase them, then they can be taken away. So we also have a dedicated percentage of the annual operating budget to fund public art. It's something that if you're going to be dedicated to as a town, you want to make sure that it's in your budget so you can afford it. And that public art goes back to the placemaking, and how do we make these very unique, special places for the Town of Hope Mills and your community. Objective 1.5 is to refresh existing parks through capital improvements. We have additional ADA parking at the recreation center, and we'll show you some plan view improvements to help address that. And we have improvements to municipal park. Again, we've got a site concept for you that we'll share a little bit later in the presentation. Ed Haring Park, we need a complete overhaul and refurbish, and it's my understanding that there is a local karate group who is trying to raise funds already to help fund some improvements there. And update the policy to promote hours from dawn till dusk, that the parks currently open until 11:00 PM, and have it closing that park a little bit earlier could help with usage. And explore joint use agreements to expand parking at Lake Park. And it's also my understanding that the town has already been involved in numerous conversations about MOUs and joint use agreements with private property owners and businesses to expand parking there. So parkland goal two is to improve equity through the park and recreation system. So equity really comes in kind of three key forms. The first is geographic distribution. So we recommend that you acquire land and add parks within the future park search areas. Again, this is going to be a handout that I'll be providing with the... Actually, I can provide the first one. Will make more sense for this bullet. I guess I shouldn't have separated it. So when we talk about geographic distribution, we want to make sure that there are parks located in all parts of your community. And we also want to make sure parks are located in what we call socially vulnerable areas. And GIS has a lot of data these days to show us where those vulnerable areas are within a community.
Thank you, sir.
And so if you look on your map, there's a vulnerability index, and in the areas of high vulnerability, you have communities that have things like lower employment rates, lower degrees of education, non-car households, lower annual incomes. Those are the places that are usually located furthest away from parks and have the most need for parks, especially within a walkable distance. So we're suggesting both future park primary search areas and secondary search areas. So if you were to add another park in the community, these are the areas that are most in need of a park. There's some lighter shaded green colors. Those indicate a 10-minute walk from existing parks. So we're trying to locate future parks in two areas. The first are the areas with high social vulnerability, and the second are areas that are not currently served by walking distance to a park.
We don't have it.
I can get it.
Oh.
And again, I'd be happy to answer questions at the end on this map as well. This is just a guide. This is not saying you need to buy parkland in these areas. This is saying if you do, if you're thinking about a new park in the future, these are the recommended locations or search areas. We haven't located specific parcels. So that's geographic distribution and geographic equity. The second way to improve equity is distribution of financial investment in parks. So we're recommending that you track the financial investment geographically. Now, we need to normalize that data, so we'll use a per acre or per resident ratio. So we're asking you to start tracking the dollars spent at each of your existing parks to make sure that they're all receiving, per the land coverage, that they're receiving equal financing across all of your parks, across the entire town. And then investing in underserved or vulnerable locations, which we talked about with the And Drew is just getting the map to pull up for those who don't have a card copy.
So for the benefit of everyone, just sharing what I was talking about before, the lighter green is low social vulnerability areas, and the darker green is high. So you see these areas here are high social vulnerability areas, where some of these close to the center of town, and here are lower social vulnerability areas. These greenish areas here are your walk times from your existing parks. So if you think about wanting people to have a 10-minute walk time to a park, all of these residents, right now, have a park within a 10-minute walk. We want to serve the people who don't have a park within a 10-mile walking distance and who have a high social vulnerability. So that's why we just gave you circles, which indicate future park search areas, if and when, general guide. And we have both primary and secondary. And the primary difference is the secondary is in a lower social vulnerability area.
And the final way to improve equity is through public transportation. And so that means both public transportation through bus stops, but also walkability of your entire community through a trail, sidewalk, and greenway network. And the last is to develop an inclusivity plan that identifies current strengths and opportunities and services provided to special populations and veterans. So we want to identify who those vulnerable populations are, which we've done through this vulnerability map that you have here. And then we want to explore opportunities to partner with organizations that support special needs. So identify those folks already in your community who are addressing and serving people with either disabilities or veterans. We want to partner with them and be able to expand the programming and services that you're providing through partnerships. Goal three is to plan for a robust greenway system with meaningful connections. So the first step here would be to develop a greenway network master plan. This would be run through the Parks and Rec Department, but obviously in collaboration with the Planning Department to develop a greenway and blueway network master plan. We're adding this word "blueway" because you do have great rivers here, and we want to take advantage of those. We want people to be able to paddle certain parts of them and connect people either by waterway or by a trail. You want to identify the way in which people use greenways. So are they going to use it for recreation, or are they going to use it for commuting or social connection? That's going to determine the type of greenway system, and oftentimes, the materials, cross-section where you locate greenways. You want to identify priority corridors on your greenway network master plan and complete feasibility studies for each. And then from those feasibility studies, you'll be able to prepare construction drawings and seek funding. Also, the last one refers to a subdivision ordinance, and I don't believe that is under your control at the moment. But if you, as a town at a point, are able to review your own development plans and have your own unified development ordinance, you would want policy in there that requires developers to construct portions of a greenway if they're located on your greenway network master plan. And do you have anything to add about the UDO?
We don't have a UDO.
Right, right. So this would be in the future if you do have control over that. And then maximize trail loops within existing parks and town-owned land. So include loop trails in any existing and future parks, and complete property ownership to study maximizing greenway connections by utilizing town-owned parcels for greenway The parkland goal four, develop existing vacant parkland to meet current recreation needs. So the first is developing or finalizing the master plan for the golf course, property securring funding, and commissioning construction drawings. Refining the master plan for Heritage Park to ensure that the proposed amenities in the site plan meet current recreation trends. And I realize you already have a site master plan. We just want to make sure, since that was done quite a few years ago, that it still aligns with the recreation needs that we found through this master planning effort. And then implement proposed improvements at Lake Park, Heritage Park, and Municipal Park. Based on the level of service, which we're just using something similar to the national average, and this is just a guide, if as a town you want to update or change your level of service to support internal philosophy or goals, you're perfectly able to do that. But based on the level of service that we're recommending, in the next 10 years, only 15 acres of additional parkland would be needed by 2028 to meet future recreation needs, and that's based on a growing population. So we use population today, and then we use the population in 2028 through population projections through the census. And based on a number, a level of service, acres per thousand population, we can say if you want to maintain the level of service you have today for future growth, then you need 15 more acres of parkland. And we would recommend those 15 acres of parkland were located in the future park search areas. So moving on to facilities, the second key focus area, we're recommending you maintain high-quality facilities that meet user needs in a safe, enjoyable way. So this is really getting at understanding any building upgrades that need to be considered in the next 10-year planning horizon. And we didn't do a complete building assessment as part of this master plan, but as a department, the system, the department needs to understand if there are building upgrades, so building systems, big HVAC, electrical roof systems that need repairing or replacing, and those should all be incorporated into what we call the total cost of service and total cost of ownership, which is a financial model that we're recommending, then that will be under the financial strategy section. Certainly renovating any fixtures and finishes to modernize aesthetics, and we always recommend fixing any ADA noncompliance first, so anything with legal ramifications, then anything that needs to improve safety, then anything like a big building systems that can cause additional deterioration of building or other systems, like water intrusion, and then your lowest priority is your fixtures and finishes for the aesthetic. And then creating detailed maintenance management plans for each facility, and those will include the cost of renovations and ongoing replacements, so you don't have a long list of deferred maintenance because we haven't considered what's going to have, what are you going to need to replace or refinish in five years, 10 years, 20 years. As purchased fitness equipment expires, we're recommending it's replaced with lease equipment. And updating the front desk to have wheelchair accessible height counters, and also some sort of control for users coming in and out to, so you know who's in your building at all times, if there is an emergency, if the building gets evacuated, if something happens to an individual and you need to identify them. It's really a safety measure to have some way for people coming and going to check in so they know who's in the building. Facilities goal number two is to create public facilities that are usable by all ages and ability levels. So this goes back to that all-inclusive goal. Incorporate ADA improvements to existing facilities. So the list here is just typical things that we look for in something called in something called an ADA audit. Grab bars, insulated pipes and drains, spatial reconfigurations of bathroom stalls. Again, we didn't do a full accessibility audit of your facilities, but that's something through the ADA Transition Plan that you'll want to work with Public Works on. Provide dedicated recreation spaces for special populations and veterans. Again, this is just looking at the percentage or proportion of special populations and veterans that you had through, in town, through the demographic analysis and the community engagement that we did and the people we heard from. We would recommend conducting a feasibility study for repurposing a portion of existing spaces for special populations. And assess specific indoor recreation needs for special populations. Facilities goal number three is to update or expand existing facilities to respond to changes in facility demand generated by changing demographics and trends. So over the next 10 years, your demographics are going to change. Recreation trends are going to change. And you want to be prepared and be flexible so you can change the facility spaces in order to meet those changing demands and trends. So the first objective is to expand indoor facility space to meet increasing programming demands. So completing a capacity study will determine additional indoor recreation space needed to meet current and future programming needs. So it's our understanding, talking with staff, that there are already some limitations the programming staff are having based on facility space alone. There's definitely a need for additional gym space. In the golf course park master plan, site master plan, we do address that. But this is specifically referring to some of those limitations based on facility space. So identifying a location for newer expanded facilities that could be renovations to this building or that could be in a future building, as we've proposed at the Gulfport Park. And then consider a partnership with the YMCA to provide aquatics programming. Aquatics was the number-one program and facility on the scientific survey that the community is interested in. It's very hard for individual municipalities to become aquatics providers, and it doesn't happen overnight. It's not impossible, but our recommendation for now is to use partners to meet community demand while they're, if interested, while there is a long-term feasibility study or strategy for providing town-owned facilities, if that's a direction the town wants to go. And then consider partnerships with the veterans community. Construct any joint-use space for special populations. The special populations from the public perspective and veterans can use very similar spaces, so it's an opportunity to serve both of those communities. Objective 3.2 is use the Priority Investment Rating Score to prioritize construction of new facilities or refurbish and improve existing. And so, again, we looked at youth and adult PIRs. Youth, we want facilities that support aquatics, fitness and wellness, multipurpose classroom space for arts, crafts, and dance and the performing arts. Expanded fitness and wellness space. And adults are interested in space for fitness and wellness, aquatics, multipurpose classroom for the arts, crafts, dance, and performing arts. So we see a lot of crossovers. So these are the places that we can have multi-generational spaces and that we can have very flexible spaces. But the data, the data's really here for you to use to validate some of the decisions about what we use future recreation space for. The fourth goal is to maximize program space through renovation by making spaces multifunctional. And so this is really about recapturing underutilized spaces for additional program space. And there aren't many of them. By doing a feasibility study here to make sure, you know, what spaces aren't being used at all hours of the day. We need a little bit more detail on how many square feet of what type of recreation space do you all need before you start programming a new facility? Or can you expand anything in this facility? Can you repurpose any of the spaces here in this facility? So we will move into programming. And the first goal is to implement the Program Management Principles that ensure consistent delivery of quality programs. So develop a recreation program plan. And then the strategy or the action item really lists all the things that needs to go into a recreation program plan. We want program standards to ensure high-quality and consistent service delivery. And this is really a recommendation for staff operations. Creating a standard program development process and training staff and cross-training staff. Continue tracking total participation, which the town already does, but we're also recommending they track customer satisfaction, program cancellation rates, and customer retention rates. Developing miniature business plans for core program areas. And your core program areas were found to be youth sports, adult sports, senior programs, special events, and special events. And just general programs. And am annually updating a similar provider list so we can continue to make sure, given any local competition, that there's a way for the town to continue to differentiate themselves from a program perspective. And then use the Priority Investment Rating from the survey results to align program offerings with needs. And annually track the life cycle of programs. So when we talk about program lifecycle and the development process, these are two graphics that help explain that. Programs start in the introduction phase. They go through takeoff growth. They mature, then they get saturated, and they decline. So we did an initial evaluation of this. And this was actually completed by Prose Consulting. This piece and the financial piece were completed by Prose. They are a national consulting firm for parks and recreation agencies that specialize in programming and operations and financial aspects of local recreation departments. And this is what they've found to be a best-practice distribution. So using this chart on an annual basis to understand, well, if we have programs that aren't doing well. So we talked about what types of program characteristics do we want to measure? Cancellation rates, you know, who signs up year after year? Where is their decline? And for any programs that are declining in participation, should they be canceled? And which programs should be started fresh and new? And then the development process really goes into detail about that, how to take a program through the introductory stage, mature and saturate, or sorry, introductory stage, all stages, the mature and saturated, and then the decline. So it gives pretty specific instructions on how to recognize when a program should be retired and how to start a new program from the ground up. Objective 1.2 is to continue to align program offerings with community needs and priorities. So again, using that Priority Investment Rating that tells you exactly what people want. For, you know, programs that don't have, that there's waiting lists, we know we need more space and more programs in those areas as well. Tracking national and regional trends will give you some additional insight on new programs to offer. And tracking no-go programs. So any programs you decide don't have enough interest, that you want to make them a quote "no-go" program. And these are the two PIR results, just to give you that graphic on what youth programs and what adult programs people are most interested in. Program number, goal number two is to improve the sustainability of programs and services through marketing and sound financial practices. So the first objective is to develop a marketing strategy. We can use the results of the scientific survey to inform a lot of how a town goes about marketing. Identifying the best marketing methods. The survey asks how people like to receive information. And they said banners in public places, word of mouth, and the newspaper. So use that information to determine how you want to distribute information. If this is how people receive information most accurately throughout the town, these are the methods you should use for your marketing. And then just develop a strategy for content and use of social media. So again, we can use the results of the scientific survey. People listed why they go to parks. What about parks makes them attend them more frequently? Using those words in your messaging for marketing. You know, I think one of, one of the results, top results, was that parks are close to home. So using, you know, come visit whatever park close to the place you live can be all integrated into your marketing messaging. So the answers are already there. Finding someone in staff who can be dedicated to getting participant pictures, contests for followers, promoting benefits and project updates, keeping the community informed on social media to tell the story about parks and recreation here in the town of Hope Mills, to talk about the successes and all the fun things going on. Implementation of a social media scheduling software. Establishing priority segments of the community for new programs. So there was some indication in the survey that residents are looking for new programs. So we want to understand what those are. And there are some in the survey results, some indications, especially using that PIR. And so developing new programs around those PIRs. And increasing focus on the key performance indicators and analytics. So tracking also helps staff make informed decisions and intelligent decisions. So the second objective is to develop financial practices for determining cost of service, program pricing, and cost recovery. So we recommend understanding the cost of services when pricing. I believe, I think it's in Finance, but we have a diagram of what understanding the cost of services looks like. It's your total cost, your direct and indirect cost to provide a service. And basing your financial structure, your cost recovery goals, and your pricing and fee structure off of what it actually costs to run your program. So developing a cost recovery policy. We recommend this for all the core program areas, which are listed on this cost recovery best practices table here. So using this, we rarely recommend cost recovery be 100%. It's really hard to maintain and it allows very little flexibility. And it also doesn't allow very much flexibility to play with your fee schedule to make it very friendly to all people. So that goes back to that all-inclusive nature we want to be tying into our financial fee structure as well. So we want to review and update the fee structure. Continue offering existing senior programs for free. That is a sector of the population that we do typically see free programs for. Charging for senior programs that are what we call value-added. So there's this program classification of essential, important, and value-added. And value-added are those things that people don't necessarily have to have, but it's really nice to have. And those are things that you want to charge a little bit more for. Consider developing a tiered fee structure for senior programs based on that program classification. So that's what I was just referring to. And this is a holistic view of pricing strategies. So these are the pricing strategies that you have to select from. And anything with an X right now is a strategy the town is currently using. So by diversifying your pricing strategies, not only can you increase your revenue, but you can also provide diversity which can expand the ability for some residents to enter programs where financial burden might have been a barrier. This goes back to that program classification and how it relates to cost recovery. So classifying your programs as essential, important, or value-added. And at the third line from the bottom, it talks about what you want your cost recovery to be for each of these types of programs. And so annually, the program staff would update their program classifications and make sure they're providing a good distribution of essential, important, and value-added programs. And that you're very clear about what the pricing strategy is for each of these in order to meet the cost recovery goals for each type of program classification. Finance goal number one is to develop a consistent approach to financing the system. So developing a business plan for the department, including recreation services, facilities, and capital. So use cost-of-service model for recreation facilities and maintenance assets. So again, that total cost of service and cost of, so total cost of service is the total cost of a service provided or an activity. And then total cost of ownership is the total cost to own an amenity or a building or a playground. And we want to do this for both our programs and our buildings. This is where you also start getting a very detailed understanding of your maintenance costs and your replacement costs. So other strategies under this objective are developing an earned income policy, a local competitor analysis, so you understand what your peer communities locally are charging for different programs and entrance fees. A partnership and sponsorship policy and training staff. So this partnership and sponsorship policy is really important. Partnerships are very important to any department. The most successful departments in the country have very strong partners. We will be providing you with both a partnership and a sponsorship best practices. But basically, this outlines some very specific strategies about how to make partnerships beneficial for both entities. That it's not really a partnership if there isn't, it's not mutually beneficial. So we'll be providing that as part of the master plan document as well. And then Objective 1.2 is to incorporate facility financially sustainable practice into all aspects of operations. So business tracking, doing a cost-benefit analysis versus, for services that can be provided either in-house or outsourced. And isn't more financially beneficial to outsource some of your maintenance or replacements so your internal team can focus on their day-to-day goals and objectives. Incorporating different funding sources. So we will be providing Drew with a long list of different funding sources to supplement any CIPs or operating budgets that you are currently using. And that's anything from grants to corporate sponsorships. It's, it's an exhaustive list. Conducting regular financial reviews and developing performance measures into employee goals for accountability. So training your employees that part of their responsibilities and their job is to meet their annual performance laws, measures for financial components as well. The second finance goal is to increase revenues and decrease expenses. The first objective is then to develop additional funding methods to support the department. So we'll be providing a list of funding options. And then the finance department will need to evaluate which are most feasible for the town and what the risk is in terms of high or low risk. Exploring grant funding, so we're already doing that with Part F. Part F continues to get more and more competitive every year. So we always recommend looking for a variety of sources for grant funding and also crossing those with other departments. So oftentimes, you can build parks with grants from a stormwater fund because there's always stormwater as part of park implementation. So thinking bigger than just the Parks and Rec Department and looking towards public utilities, stormwater, and other grant funding. So exploring franchises and licensing strategies. Continue to annually review all service and program fees and develop a corporate sponsorship policy. I know that a sponsorship brochure is going out. And we would just recommend that along with that, you have a corporate sponsorship policy that defines the terms of any relationships. And the second objective is to enhance cost containment measures for financial sustainability. So continue to augment any new programs or facilities or staff needs with partnerships, volunteers, and inter-local agreements. Develop a life cycle replacement schedule for all department assets. So again, that's a very important point. So again, that's that total cost of ownership idea, so you know when you're going to have to replace an expensive item or when it's going to need maintenance and repair. Using a recommendation for purchase request, develop a purchasing policy included, including required approval, and seeking out competitive quotes for consumables every two years. And I believe this is our last key focus area for the comprehensive plan, and this is staffing and operations. Goal one is to enhance decision-making to affect positive change. So the first is to empower staff to make decisions and implement improvements. So the strategy here is to update roles and responsibilities of advisory boards through policy. So dissolving outdated or ineffective advisory boards. The goals and objectives of an advisory board should be very clear from the day that they are created, and there also should be a, it's, it's an, when their objective has been met, how the advisory board is dissolved. So if there are advisory boards that have been around for a long time, but their job is done, we probably want to dissolve those. Defining roles and responsibilities of the Parks and Recreation Director, and it's my understanding you'll be, you're currently interviewing for a new Parks and Rec Director, so I wish you well in that process. Develop a communications plan to define lines of communication between you all, the town manager, and the Parks and Recreation staff. The second objective is to use community input and scientific survey results to prioritize and validate decision-making. And these tools are really intended to make the job of staff easier and decisions hopefully easier for you as commissioners. We've provided a number of data points and information based in a scientific survey, best practices, national standards, and we've heard from the public and from your community members. And the idea is that you can use this information moving forward to help make decisions. So using the priority investment ratings to prioritize and validate decisions regarding new programs and parker facility updates and expansions. Using customer satisfaction surveys, which is a recommendation of the plan, to prioritize and validate decisions regarding programs to retire or introduce. Clarify how input from business owners and residents within town limits and residents within, it's not an ETJ, it's MIA, should be received and addressed. So we did hear throughout the community engagement process that people who don't live within town limits or who don't live within town limits but have businesses within town limits don't have a clear understanding of how their input can be heard. So just clarifying, you know, is that within, is that something that the town provides? Is that something under the county's purview? And identifying special interest groups, private recreation providers, nonprofits, and other organizations with interest in partnerships to strengthen recreation offerings. So we always recommend that a new program offering or a new amenity be started on a trial basis with a partner or as a satellite program first. You want to make sure that it's going to be successful. And as I mentioned before, all successful departments have partnerships, and it's the best way to offer your community everything that they're looking for without the entire burden falling on the Park and Rec Department and the town. So the second goal is to codify department procedures to improve effectiveness, efficiencies, and safety. And this is a lot of mumbo jumbo about manuals, policies, operating procedures, and standards. I don't want to take too much time to go through all of it, and this will primarily apply to your staff. But it does list what we believe to be some effective operations, policies, and procedures that will help the department staff operate in a very collaborative team environment while also being efficient and effective at service delivery, maintenance, and any other internal operations. And this objective is focused on enhancing staff skills, leadership, and employee growth through professional development. And we've listed some very specific schools through the National Parks and Recreation Association, but also some other areas of interest such as management, finances, or marketing that staff might want to seek outside classes for. And also internal training on all of your processes. So for example, all of your staff are very forward-facing. Parks and Recreation staff, more so than any other department in the town, interface with the community. And so training all of your staff on customer services, marketing, what is the messaging, what are we trying to communicate to our public, is very important. And also incentivizing staff to seek out certifications and additional professional development. So the third goal is to prepare the organizational structure to meet existing and future demand. And that is really through developing a five-year personnel plan. You want to anticipate future staffing needs of any park expansions. Parks, especially if they're going to have buildings or high-maintenance facilities, they're going to require additional staff. And we want to understand what the maintenance management plan is going to be for any future facilities, so you can properly prepare for your staff. If you're planning on expanding programming into a certain niche area, you might want to start with a contract employee or a partner, but then thinking about if that program's really successful and that's a niche for the town, do we want to hire that person full-time? So understanding any positions needed and what the total annual cost of employment would be, and then securing approval and funding of staffing increases based on workload and standards. So at this time, I would be happy to take any questions on the first part of the presentation, which is the comprehensive master plan.
Start with Commissioner Bellflowers. Do you have any comments or questions on this part?
Hi, Rachel.
Hi there.
There's a lot to cover in about an hour, less than an hour.
It is, it is.
Well, I've got a few.
Okay.
I'm just going to zip through, and I'll probably have more by the time we get to Commissioner Legg, but I'll just start with the list that I've got. How were the goals and objectives established?
The goals and objectives are established a few ways. The input we use is from a staff SWOT analysis. So we meet with staff and we do a strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis. We meet with the community, so we had a number of community events to solicit information from your community. We completed a level of service and a benchmarking exercise, which look at national trends and best practices and where the town kind of measures up to some of those best practices. And then the results of the scientific survey. And so for each of those five key areas, we went into the plan knowing what those key focus areas were going to be. So parks, facilities, programs, staffing and operations, and finances, so five or six there. And all of those data pieces that I just mentioned inform each one of those key focus areas.
Speaking of the scientific survey, this is the one that was administered here in town?
Correct.
Okay. The results of the scientific survey, what did you find to be the top, let me make sure I got my notes right, top five overall priorities from the scientific survey? Both youth and adults, what were the top five?
For programs or facilities?
Programs.
Programs.
And then we'll go to facilities.
For youth, it's aquatics, outdoor music and concerts, arts and crafts, well, arts, crafts, dance, and performing arts is all grouped into one. Fitness and wellness.
Yep.
And outdoor adventure. And keep in mind, P I R is based on what respondents say there is a lack of and what they say there is demand for. So if there is not a lack of an amenity, but there's a big demand for it, it's still going to have a lower P I R than an amenity that you don't have yet in town and there's a demand for.
Well, yeah, I'm glad you brought up the P I R, because when I look at the results of the scientific survey, the top five from the scientific survey was aquatic swimming, nature trails.
Those are the facilities.
Yeah, facilities. Indoor exercise, facilities, and splash pad. Does that, do those align with the P I R?
Those are the P I R for facilities. So we have three P I Rs. We have facilities, which you just mentioned, and then we have youth programs and adult programs. So there's facilities in and of themselves, and then there's the facilities that will support all of the youth programs. And usually, we find they're pretty much in alignment.
Okay, and they support both youth and adult?
Yes, yes. Well, that's where we can get the multi-generational spaces. That's where we get the most bang for your buck, you could say. There are, I'm trying to see where the differences are here. Actually, I think walking and jogging is an adult preference that we don't see in youth, but everything else lines up.
Yeah.
And walking and jogging is really supported by the facilities and the nature trails and the greenway trails, so.
Well, and that's what, not to be long, Mayor, but, and that's what I was trying to do the connection with, was when you were talking about mapping greenways and blueways, which is excellent, by the way. I love both of them.
Great.
Which we should be doing. I hope we do do. Then I also look at the alignment of the youth and adult of nature trails, because that does fit both. Okay. Just wanted, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's less, they'll support youth programs less. The only program really that was a high P I R that trails can support is walking and jogging for adults. But it's also in and of itself, one of, it's the second highest-ranked P I R for facilities. So there's plenty of justification for trails and greenways.
Yeah, and that's, that was one of my points. You know, of course, we all, we all know aquatics is the number one. I mean, there's, I fully support aquatics. And nature trails would come in right at number two.
Yep.
Okay. Did, did you recommend any building upgrades to the existing structure at the lake park?
Not specifically, no. We looked primarily, we didn't really look at too many park-specific improvements, but we, I mean, we can certainly include something if that seems to be a need.
Well, you're, you did review the existing structures in the municipal park, correct?
We did. We don't necessarily, the only reason we have any recommendations for municipal park is because in order, we're shifting some stuff back and forth between the golf course park and municipal park, which will make much more sense when I show you the concepts. But renovations need to take place for municipal park in order to implement the golf course park. So that's the reason we took a little bit more detailed look, but it wouldn't be difficult to add some sort of, I mean, we can't do a structural evaluation, but if a recommendation needs to be for a structural evaluation to be completed, that can easily be added to the plan.
Well, I'd like to see that, because I don't want to exclude the lake park, because it is part of the comprehensive plan under the umbrella.
Yep.
So I would, I would appreciate an evaluation on that existing structure. I mean, I have my own thoughts, but you're the professional.
Was that with the gazebo structure?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's a structure where Big T's is, that pavilion structure.
Okay.
There's two structures out there. There's the concession stand that Big T's is in with the shelter, some bathrooms, and then the gazebo.
Okay, so it's not the gazebo? Not the gazebo.
Yeah, it's not the gazebo. It's a concession stand structure.
Okay. Yep, we can add that.
What are, what are some of the examples of, you mentioned a miniature business plans for core program areas. What were some examples that you're thinking of?
Of core program areas or, so your core program areas are...
You, you mentioned miniature business plans.
Yes, so we're suggesting a miniature business plan be created for each of the core program areas, and I can tell you what those are. Just a second, I'm just finding that slide. You don't remember what slide that was, do you?
No, I've, I've just gone through, writing down my questions.
Youth sports, adult sports, senior program, special events.
So you're looking at, do you have examples of those, or are you going to recommend?
We've got examples of many business plans.
That was really my question.
We could include that in, in appendix of some sort. I think we actually talk about it in the master plan, what goes into a business plan for this, but really, you're looking at defining the market, understanding the participants, your demographics, completing that peer-agency provider analysis, determining your price recover, your cost recovery for each one of those. You're looking at your price structure for each one of those, and you're looking at the total cost of service, and then backing into what is your cost recovery goal and what do we need to provide in the way of a fee structure to meet that cost recovery goal.
Excellent. You can provide that in an appendix. I'll tell you, Rachel, you're reading my mind, because my next question goes right with the fee schedule, I tell you. Are you going to review the, the current surface and program fee schedule and make recommendations? As part of the final comprehensive plan?
No. And one reason we, we provide you with the tools to do so, but your pricing structure is really a philosophy. And we can't, it, it's not our position to tell you what your philosophy should be on fee structure. Some departments feel that recreation should be completely subsidized by the agency and everything should be free. Some people think cost recovery should be 20% or lower. Some departments think that cost recovery should be 100% for every program offered, and that's how you back into your fee structure. So it's really a philosophy of how do you want to approach pricing with your residents? Our suggestion is to look at using a diversity of these pricing strategies, because this is the best way to ensure that all inclusivity, that everyone in your community has some option here to pay for a service, but that you can also charge for value-added services where you can experience some revenue generation and some additional cost recovery.
Well, I know you don't, we don't want to overcharge, but then again, we don't want to undercharge.
True.
You have to find that balance.
You do, you do. And a great example, Philip, who helped prepare this, always uses is, when you're going to, let's say you're going to Lowe's and you want to pick out, you know, new cabinets, and you have an idea in your head of approximately what it's going to cost, and you go to pick up or take a look at a cabinet and it's way below that, you wonder what's wrong. Why, why is that so cheap? Maybe I don't want to buy it. And then there's the stuff that you think, oh, that's way out of my price range. So you're trying to find that sweet spot of what are people, what's going to excite people, what do they feel like they're getting value for, and making sure you're providing that value. And so you can do that a number of ways. One of the best ways is to look at that similar provider analysis. So get fee schedules from your peers and understand what they're charging for programs, and look at the quality and the level of education and talent of your staff, and you have incredibly talented staff. What, what are they offering? What are your customer feedback surveys saying? If you're providing excellent service, you should be charging a fee that reflects that.
Okay. All right. Mayor, that's all I have now. When we go into the next phase, I'll have other questions.
Okay. Right, Commissioner Legg, do you have any questions?
Okay. Right, Commissioner Legg, do you have any questions?
Me, you said?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I do. Not a lot, but I do have some. I made notes in the book, so I got to look through it. Rick, you talked about different levels for pallets of plant.
Yes.
How do we know which level that will be?
Great question. So, excuse me, in the actual master plan, we go into a little bit more detail, but that's something you work with your park maintenance folks on. So a level one maintenance, we usually call, is the highest level of maintenance. It requires the most intense effort by your maintenance personnel. Those are things like the entrances to your parks. Those are the foundation plantings around your buildings. Anything that's very highly visible to the public, that you want to send the message, we care about our parks and we have a lot of pride in our parks. And we're showing that and demonstrating that through the way we take care of our landscaping. Level two is kind of in the middle, less intense maintenance, and then level three is more of your naturalized areas. So you have trails that meander through a pine stand. That pine stand really takes very little maintenance, maybe attention once a year, twice a year versus, you know, the, the roses and the annuals that need attention on a weekly basis. And the other thing that's very high maintenance, or we consider a level one, is any athletic fields because there's such intensity during the spring and summer seasons for mowing.
Who establishes that? The Parks and Recreation and staff members?
Yes, they would. They would go through their parks and highlight, even on a map, what we think a level one area, what a level two area is, and what a three. And then from there, you can say, okay, for a level one areas, these are how many, how many hours a week our maintenance staff are spending taking care of level one, two, and three areas at each park, which translates into total man-hours, and you can get a very accurate cost of your, of your maintenance personnel. That factors into that total cost of service.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The objective 2.1, you stated in there that we need to acquire land and add parks within the future park search area?
Yep.
Do we have enough land for what we're trying to do now?
You do.
Or do we need to go look for more land?
You do. You absolutely do. So we're using a level of service standard of 10, I believe, 10 acres per 10,000 residents. This is facilities we want program. So this is really related to improving equity and geographic distribution. So right now, given your current population, you have enough developed acres of parkland or enough acres of parkland dedicated towards parks, but your population's going to increase. And so to maintain 10 acres per 10,000 residents, per 1,000 residents, actually, you will need to acquire, and this is just a general guide, you could say we want 11 acres per 1,000 population. We're just using the national standard to give you a general guide, but really it's more about that geographic distribution. And if you are to add parkland, those are the areas that you should do it. But according to that level of service, I think we calculated in the next 10 years, about 15 additional acres would be needed to maintain your current level of service.
And that land at Lake Bed Number Two, is that included in the total acreage that we have now?
It is not because it's not a dedicated parkland.
But it's dedicated to Parks and Rec, right?
Not that I'm aware of. It's shown as town-owned land.
I'm surprised at that. Really am.
The parks that we included as dedicated for Parks and Recreation are those that either have existing parks, developed parks, or parks that have master plans underway and have been truly dedicated as parkland with program facilities.
Okay. And one reason I ask that question, because I noticed down here in objective number 3.2, that it said this is included trails in existing and future parks, including the golf course park and Lake Bed Number Two.
Yeah, that should, well, it can be town-owned land. So I think Lake Bed Number Two fits better under the property ownership study, so the next bullet down to maximize. You could certainly use it for greenway trails there.
I'm sorry?
I think it's, it's fine use for greenway trails, especially along the river corridor there. It's a great blue way or trailside connection.
Okay, let me see, what else I have here? Okay, in 3.2, objective 3.2, I think you might explain, explained a while ago where some of the, the facilities could be used for youth and adults.
Yes.
Like the, the classrooms, arts and crafts and things like that, there can be multiple use building of rooms.
Yep, that's what we call a multi-generational use.
So we don't really need to, to be between those classrooms?
Correct. Yeah, the more you can double up on flexible space or multi-generational space.
I'm all in favor of that. Okay. I'm wondering what's cut off in my page here in objective 1.2. I see letters sticking up, but I don't know what's cut off.
Do you know what, are you under, what key focus area?
Programs goals.
I'm sorry?
Program goals.
Program, okay.
It looked like we might have been cut something off there.
Yeah, which one was it? I'm sorry.
Oh, here's that one. Anybody else have that one?
What's that box cut off?
Sir?
Program goals and objectives, and then strategy action. Objective 1.1?
Yes, and actually...
And 1.2 is where it gets cut off.
Yep, so it was, I transferred it down to this one. So it's on there twice, so it's not cut off the second time. I should have deleted the other slide up there.
I just wondered what was there.
Yeah, it's, it's objective 1.2, and it's two slides down, is the same text. So like, if I go back to where you're saying the text got cut off, it's objective 1.2, continue to align program offerings with community needs and priorities. I just copied that slide, and it's at the top of this one.
Okay, good. We were speaking a while ago about, excuse me, fees?
Yep.
I think everybody knows that Parks and Recreation works at a loss. We need to find a way to balance out the recovery, whether it be 50-50 or whatever, even that would be great, because we don't do it now. And is it because of, we don't have the facility to have programs that would bring back more revenue, or because we don't have the fees to do that?
So I think it's a combination of things. And I, I would also encourage you to undertake an economic impact study for Parks and Recreation. Most departments are under the impression that they're operating at a loss simply because of revenue versus cost of service dollars. But oftentimes, what we don't consider is the economic impact that Parks and Recreation has. Parks and Recreation is the only department where people spend their disposable income. And it's also the, one of the few departments where people from the outside come here to recreate, whether it's through tournaments or to visit greenway trails, where $1 from the outside is multiplied and translates into many, many dollars of economic impact. So one recommendation I'd also like you to consider would be an economic impact study. We recently worked with High Point, and they, they thought they were experiencing a loss too, but really their Park and Recreation Department was bringing in $2.6 million of economic impact annually. So I do think there are many strategies in here that can help you improve your cost recovery. That's both by tracking your programs in all the ways that we mentioned, but especially, you know, customer satisfaction, retention rates, participation rates, changing your programs to make sure that you're providing programs that the community is really excited about, improving your marketing efforts, making sure those participation rates are high, reevaluating your fee structure, which Drew is already in the process of doing. So all of the strategies in here are very specific to make sure that you can improve your, your cost recovery as a department.
Yeah, Doug, I'd just like to find a way that we can do a major recovery to, at some point, our Parks and Rec wouldn't have to be supplemented in our budget. If it is now, we have to transfer money into there to run it. But if we had something, brought in more money, like a baseball stadium, and I know people get tired of hearing me say that, but if we could host a baseball tournament, that is roughly $8,000 to $10,000 a weekend just in fees paid to Parks and Recreation, that could be as high as $40,000 to $50,000 a month, not counting the economical impact that it would have on our hotels and restaurants or our shopping. I think that we need to get serious about looking into the construction of that, because you mentioned tournaments a while ago. The fields we have now, we can't draw tournaments on, big tournaments, money-making tournaments. All we can do is draw small district tournaments. So that, that's one of my main things there, is to find a way that we can recover money and make money in the future, because some of these other projects that we want to do, we can supplement those projects through the profit off of some of these tournaments that we could host here. Because, and the other thing is the, you talked about the advertising and make stuff for people to know what things are, what's going on. Right there is a man that can do it for us. He's Roger. He, he does a great job of, of taking care of home mills. I think that's all I've got right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards?
Well, then, a lot's been said, but, and there were good questions and everything, but this is a comprehensive plan, and I know all the work was put into it, and it's fantastic. And I know that you've spent a lot of hours talking to the citizens and getting the input of what they want. And I think that's what we really need to consider, is what they want and not what we, we want. And I feel that a lot of the grant findings and the strategic planning and stuff like that should fall back on our staff. They've, they've worked on it, and they, they've really worked hard on it.
Yep.
And I think it looks great. I really do.
Thank you. And thanks to staff, they have provided us with a lot of information and worked very hard on, on the plan. So, thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Can you just refresh my memory? How many surveys, scientific surveys went out?
Um, yeah. I might have to get, I know how many we got back. I think it was 2,000 or 3,000, but I might have to get that final number for you.
How many did we get back? Five, something?
Yeah, the scientific survey. I think we got four, 300 or 400 back. Let me double-check on that, and I'll, I'll shoot these guys an email. Yes. So special populations are physical and mental disabilities, and that's both from a demographics and census perspective, but also folks we talked to in the community. We talked to folks with autistic children, disabled children, big veterans population, even returning military personnel, PTSD. So we're kind of grouping that, all of those individuals, any ages, into kind of the special populations. And it's supported by both the demographics, that from a demographics perspective, the census asks about, and those that we heard from the community.
Okay. Commissioner Bellflower's asked a couple of my questions, so I'm not going to go back over those. Certainly, when this board commissioned the comprehensive plan, we were under, at least I was under the assumption, that we were doing all of the town prop, owned property, and that you were going to individually look at each piece of property and tell us if it's park-worthy. But it didn't really work out that way. It was more like four or five, you know, you know, several just parks that were selected, and large tracts that are in our Southwest Land Use Plan and our 23rd Growth Plan left off. So obviously, we were wondering how that happened. And you're saying that that's town-owned property, but not, even though it's in two large plans, that's not considered park property?
I can go back and look at those two plans, and I know we wrote about this in the initial assessment that we sent out, the revised initial assessment. We define parkland that we do detailed assessments on as town-owned, operated, and developed parkland. So we're doing the golf course property because that's a site-specific master plan, a separate contract. Everything else we evaluated from a detailed park standpoint is things that, and I can give you the criteria, but our scope was to do town-owned parks. We've included other town-owned property at the board's request. I can't remember what the exact recommendations of those other plans were, but we had to characterize and categorize parkland and open space for the purposes of the plan. And we typically characterize parkland as own, operated, managed, maintained. Those are the pieces of the parcels that we evaluated. Detailed, usually we would recommend something like doing a highest, if there's town-owned property that isn't necessarily dedicated for one specific use, we recommend a highest and best use study. So we could include a recommendation to undertake a highest and best use study for any town-owned parcels that could be used for additional parkland.
Okay. The reason I ask is, you know, we've had several maps that had come to us, and, and Lake Number Two was on it for four months and then dropped off the map as being...
It was, it's, it's actually on all of our maps, and it's indicated as town-owned land.
Now it is, but originally going back to December, December, January, February, and March, it was on there as town property, and then it dropped off on the next map. Now it's back on. But I was just curious how, you know, what had, how that criteria had been selected.
I think initially it wasn't on there, and then at your request, we added it.
Well, it was on there in, in December, when they were doing G I, G I S mapping, but that's fine. The, the partner, for the partnerships, is, were those, how, how did you come about those?
We don't... We don't specifically recommend anyone partnership. We're just saying that partnerships are a valuable part of any Parks and Recreation strategy and system.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Mayor Proteam?
Rachel, we've known each other a little while now, since I was Parks and Rec Director before coming on the board. And got talking about the golf course first, of course. Appreciate all your hard work and your company's hard work. I just have a few things, I hope. I assume you continue to work with staff. Were Parks and Rec staff members in supervisory positions, were they interviewed individually? Was there a process that, where you gathered their thoughts and their ideas, ideals for the future?
Yep, absolutely. The biggest input we received was from the SWAT analysis, and so we meet with staff. We had, I think, two or three sessions, and it was, a, a lot of it was based on availability. But we met with programming staff, we met with all the maintenance staff, we met with Maxi and other leadership staff, and we created different quadrants of a board for strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats for each of the key areas of the plan. So we heard a lot of comments from staff, and that's where a lot of our recommendations originated from. We also presented these draft recommendations to a large group of staff a few weeks ago, so they could provide us with any comments, any additions, make sure, make sure the data was accurate before we presented it to you all. So they've also had an opportunity to work through the draft recommendations.
Thank you. As you're aware, we've got Interstate 295 corridor coming, and we're going to have six exchanges, is what I'm told. Has there been any consideration for the massive amount of growth we're experiencing or going to be experiencing from that, as anticipated?
As far as we have data for, meaning we're using ESRI, which is based on census data, and they have projections for future population growth, they don't necessarily take into account specific projects. So if your planning department has any additional population projections, we're happy to integrate those, but that has not, unless it was accounted for in the ESRI and census data, we don't have a way to project that growth necessarily. We could mention it qualitatively if that would be something that needs to be acknowledged.
Okay. Recently, we just got a donation of land, Parkton Road, right at the bridge. Not sure if we have kayak access yet or creek access, but it's right there at the creek.
Great.
And, you know, we have kayakers that like Class One water, and we've got kayakers that like Class Five water, and most of the water in the Little Rockfish Creek is more slow-moving water, and then when you get to the, the Big Rockfish Creek, where Lake Bed Number Two is, you get into the more swift water, of course, and it, it brings a level of danger. But that was kayaking on Lake Bed Number Two, that area there, considered in your planning?
Um, just the, sorry, say the, ask the question again.
As far as future programming or that thing?
For a specific...
You said you mentioned greenways.
Greenways and blueways, so...
Okay, the blueways. Did you mention that? Did, did you consider that in your blueways?
Uh, well, we're just recommending a blueway master plan, so as part of a greenway-blueway master plan, you look at where a blueway corridor would be, and usually, you set your input or takeout points at four-to-six mile distances. They could be closer, depending on the water, and you want to make sure that you have, you know, continuously navigatable water, and that the input and takeout points are publicly accessible. So anytime you have riverfront access, I would recommend doing a quick analysis to make sure that the land is going to support a trailhead or a blueway, you know.
As you and I spoke on several occasions, it would be nice for our citizens to put in at golf course and get out at Cotton Fire Department.
Sure.
I think that would give them a good, pretty good track of good water that would be unrivaled, I would think, unless you want to go down into Cape River, take your chances with some toxicity, but...
Be a great lie.
Yeah, tho- those would be like the, the specific recommendations and routes of your blueway plan.
As far as our annual program guide, that's, I think it's online, did you look at that any? Did you do any evaluation of that?
Um, the actual guide or the programs offered?
The, the guide and its content?
Um, PROS Consulting probably did. I don't know that they've made a lot of comments on the actual guide. I think that goes back more to the marketing recommendations and tweaking and tailoring the language and the messaging to appeal to the things that your community said, they, the reasons that they choose to partake in Towne and Hope Mills programs.
And also, what the marketing of that program guide?
Mm-hmm.
I do like the sponsorship idea. We, the mayor put me on a grant committee, and we was able to raise $20,000 through, a lot of it's sponsorship money, through local corporations and businesses. On the, on the pricing strategies, and I think, I think we already make some concessions, and hopefully we do, for the lower-income households. I don't, you know what most municipalities do as far as compliance on that? I mean, you take somebody's word for their income level.
That's one way to do it. Another one that I like is prime, non-prime time, or weekend weekdays, or even selecting a day of the week where a certain program or amenity fee is eliminated or reduced. And so people who aren't able to pay regular fees have a day or another opportunity to attend the program or the facility.
I think I'm talking about the application process.
Um, that one wouldn't necessarily, maybe something like a scholarship to attend?
I'm talking about, okay, so I come in, I say, "I'm low-income, I like your free program."
That you would need to write some sort of policy about what qualifies for that and how an individual would, you know, prove, or would it be an honor system, or that would be outlined in a policy. I can ask PROS if they have an example of it. I know I do not.
I didn't know if they worked with DSS some, or...
Not sure.
I mean, I went to Clinton as an auditor in 1987, and found 100 school lunch programs that shouldn't have been approved, and that was just simply a compliance problem. The parents were honest. I mean, they were just writing down their income, and nobody was following behind it, but...
Yeah.
That was no fault of the parents.
I can, I'll ask PROS if they've, if they have any compliance policy that might help guide that.
And as far as pricing, I mean, in the private world, and I joke with my corporations all the time, our restaurants, I said, "If your restaurant's too full, you're probably not charging enough." It's a supply and demand. If you've got a good product, and you've got people waiting an hour to eat your food, you're probably not charging enough. And if we've got programs, we're having a waiting list, and it, it sounds, maybe it sounds, you know, it's an economic thing, but that's how, in the private world, that's just the way it works.
Right.
You know? So I guess in pricing strategies, that's something that probably should be considered. I don't know, some of our most pop, I think senior programs are very popular, and we like to accommodate everyone, but sometimes we don't always have enough room. Recently, we found out we're federal, was it Tier One, Mayor? We found out we're federal Tier One level. In your experience, have you found that there's more grant opportunities when you're a federal Tier One level, as far as getting community block grants and those kind of things?
I haven't actually had to look at different level, federal levels of communities, so I don't know that I have a good perspective for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that Cary probably don't qualify if it's Tier One, but...
Tier Three.
Fayetteville probably does, is Fayetteville Tier One?
Of Cumberland County is Tier One.
All of Cumberland County is Tier One. So that may help us in our funding resources, right? Was there any consideration of the Charlotte Robinson Life Center that has built this huge basketball facility, as far as future programming of that particular program?
Um, not that, what is it, the Charlotte?
The Charlotte Robinson Life Center.
TJ Robinson.
TJ Robinson.
Life Center. Um, that, I mean, not specifically, but I think that would fall under the recommendation for a capacity study, to look at all the square footage you have available, whether it's a, it's town facility or a partner facility, to see if you can expand your programming. And I'm not...
Look at inside the town limits now, the...
Familiar, yeah, I'm not familiar with that actual center.
Okay.
But I can look into it.
And I think the last thing is, um, and everything we're doing here is for the citizens. Of course, everybody comes up with the amenities they want, but not how to fund them. And, I mean, at some point, I, I would still support a bond referendum, because then the citizens can decide if they want the amenities.
Yep.
Because at the end of the day, there's no free amenities, no matter how many grants you get. If we develop all these parks, we can't, we can't sustain the overhead we have right now. We don't have the resources currently to provide the overhead for additional park space, even though we have the land. So just throwing it out there.
And again, I think, have you received the funding strategies list from Philip? I thought he might have sent that.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I think he sent that after that last time.
Yeah, so Drew's vetting it right now to see which ones would be appropriate, but it's a, it's a couple-page document on potential funding strategies out. I mean, it includes grants, but in addition to grants and sponsorships and operating budgets and CIPs. So hopefully, there's some strategies, some additional strategies in there you can adopt.
Okay. I appreciate, oh, you're done, appreciate it.
Sure.
And I just have a couple of things, and one is just to clarify. One is that the town-owned property that we currently have, is that included in the number of acreage that we would have for parks? Or would we need 15 acres of that property to make our parks correct for 2028? Does that make sense?
It does. So, and I had a, and in the last presentation, we agreed on the developed parkland and undeveloped parkland for which there's a current master plan would be considered your total parkland acres. And so that's Hope Mills Municipal Park, Lake Park, Brower Park, Ed Haring Park, Bon Air Gardens, the Golf Course Park, and Heritage Park. And under additional town-owned land, we have specifically to be considered under some sort of future highest and best use study, the Legion Road, Lake Bed Number Two. We also have all of the joint use agreements, being the Gordon Butler Nature Preserve, that's kind of owned 50/50, the Ed Baldwin Elementary, Hope Mills Middle School, and Southview Middle and High School. And another, another reason we focus on town-owned, operated, managed, and developed is because it directly translates into the resources you need. And so we're trying to relay acres of parkland, not only to population, but to maintenance requirements and your staff. And so to put these definitions and these boundaries, kind of these parentheses, on what we include in parkland is not to say you can't in the future decide you want to dedicate additional town-owned land to parks, it's simply to say this is what's impacting your finances, your programming, your staff, right now. And this is what we're basing your current snapshot on. And I think for any other, regardless of where the town-owned property is, you're going to want to do, and we do have this, we have a best practices for this, you're going to want to do kind of a highest and best use study to see if the land is appropriate for what you want to do from a Parks and Recreation perspective. So you need to do a complete site analysis, you need to understand what are your development restrictions, what are your environmental restrictions? Just because it's owned by the town doesn't mean it's necessarily, it may or may not be appropriate for recreation. If you want to, you know, if your biggest need is aquatics or trails, and the land can't support that, then maybe you need to look at another piece of land. And so we report on what we know the town has control over as a park facility today. And so that 15 acres could be any land, anywhere in the future. We're recommending it's in these spots because those are your underserved areas and communities, but if it makes more sense to dedicate something you already own, so you're not paying for land acquisition, then that's a decision that the town needs to make.
That's what I was noticing, was that the areas that you have are not crossing over some of the town-owned property that we currently own because of the populations or the needs where they are, and also the gaps in our, the donut holes that are there, which is not, in other words, we wouldn't be serving anyone in certain areas because that's not currently in Hope Mills, it's in our MIA. The other thing that I, that I wanted to say too, that I thought was important, is that Fayetteville, right now, with their grant, with their bond referendum that they did, and this is to respond, I guess, a little bit so that we would have an impact study with what Commissioner Legg is discussing, is that they're actually building or planning to build tournament ballfields. So there would be one possibly on Santa Fe roadside, or wherever they end up putting it. So I wonder if that would be overload for Cumberland County to have two, and there's supposed to be naturally one that would host lots of teams. So just, that's another thing I think that impact study would be beneficial for. And the other thing I think that's important, that in my mind, and I don't, and I saw the looks on some of our staff's faces that worked with Parks and Rec, I believe Parks and Rec is a quality of life, and I believe it's just like our public safety with our police and fire. You expect, as a citizen, to pay something for those amenities. So I don't think that we're subsidizing, or I don't believe that what we're doing is losing money, because you see the children and the number of adults that are here, and the things that happen in our Parks and Rec, I think it's important to know that that's something that they look for, and that's why they come to Hope Mills for quality of life. So I didn't want that budget conversation to hurt feelings, because really and truly, that's what Hope Mills is all about, is people come here because the walking trail, they come here because of youth sports, they come here for senior activities. And then I do, I do agree that economic impact study might be something we want to head toward, especially with what's happening, but I appreciate what, the information that you've given, and I look at this, and when the concern is on the number of surveys that were returned, I believe it's just like the number of people that vote in Hope Mills. You know, you look at how, how many people voted and elected us, so if I said that the number of people that voted for me returned surveys, then I'd be pleased, because that would be a test of what normally happens in Hope Mills, is that we, we'll have people that will come, but not necessarily return information. But if we got those surveys back, I think it's a good sampling, so I appreciate you, everything you've done, and thank you for this part. And so I guess now we move to the next phase.
Can I, can I touch on what you just said, please, quickly?
Yes, sir.
Um, we're talking about Parks and Rec, how it's funded, but you know, if you think about it, every time something new comes up, they shove it off on Parks and Rec. And Parks and Rec sometime had to pay $20,000, three or four times a year for a program they weren't expecting, or something that they weren't expecting. So when we say we have to supplement them, we don't go back and pick up all the things that we add on to them every year, that are specialty things, uh, beauty pageants or stuff like that, you know? Those don't come cheap, no matter how you look at it, but... But, uh, I think the direction we're headed in with Parks and Rec is an uphill battle, but I think we're headed in the right direction. But I just wanted to keep in mind that, that everything that Parks and Rec does is not funded. It comes out of the fund, but we don't budget it for them. Thank you, you've done a great job presenting this, Claire.
Thank you, okay, thank you, ma'am. All right.
Thank you.
So if there's no other questions, um, the second part of our presentation is the Golf Course Park Site Master Plan. And this also includes some municipal park renovations because these two, um, these sets of recommendations go hand in hand. Sure, that would be great. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you municipal first because it will explain and validate some of the decisions that we made on the Golf Course Concept.
Thank you, sir.
So the design decisions for some of the municipal park renovations are informed by the recommendations of the master plan, some ongoing improvements to Town Hall and Public Works that staff made us aware of, um, certainly community input, the priority investment ratings, and that we couldn't necessarily design the Golf Course Park in a bubble, that we wanted to provide residents with diverse experiences and amenities across the park system. And we had to make some decisions on what land is best suited for what amenities. And there is this core of activity here at the Recreation Center that we wanted to preserve and maintain. A lot of your, uh, community events are already being hosted here. Um, but the park has a lot of wear and tear, it's heavily used. There are a number of upgrades, uh, that would need to take place to make this, um, the park that I believe you all would be excited about and that the master plan is recommending. And so, um, we wanted to reprogram some of these spaces to address both the recommendations in the master plan and some of the things that we're proposing for the Golf Course Park, which has a lot of acreage. And having a lot of acreage and some flat spaces is, uh, very conducive to certain program elements. So, um, this plan, we'll start in the left here. Um, we have taken into account the, um, street or new access road just north of Town Hall. We've expanded parking, um, both for Town Hall and for the recreation system, or, excuse me, the recreation building itself. Um, we've kind of bumped the parking a little bit east, so there's a little bit more room by the drop-off to the Recreation Center to enhance that a bit. Um, we've maintained but realigned the road, or the, the walking path in certain areas. And we realized that, um, or it's been called to our attention, that some improvements need to be made to the asphalt, that there are some tripping hazards. And so those can be some spot repairs as part of this, or potentially sooner. Um, a splash pad and all-inclusive playground or all-inclusive amenities in general were two of the top things that we heard, um, were wanted and needed by the community and also walking trails. So we're proposing that the, um, Fields One and Two get repurposed as, and you actually have an updated version. So you, we've made some tweaks since what's included up there. So we've repurposed the Fields One and Two to have soccer, or multi-use fields on them, and some youth soccer fields. Um, soccer, demand for soccer and lacrosse is certainly increasing. And having, uh, multi-use, open lawn space can also support large festivals and events. So to the north of those fields, we've also added kind of a, a covered pavilion and amphitheater space. So this all of a sudden becomes a very multifunctional lawn space. You can play soccer, you can play lacrosse, you can play football, you can have one-legged races for a family picnic, you can have family picnics, you can have kite flying, you can have a big event with a bandstand at the north end of the field. Um, and we have also added a splash pad and an all-inclusive playground at this facility. Um, the all-inclusive playground is about ten thousand square feet, and the splash pad is about eight. Um, we've reconfigured some of the parking, so there's additional parking in between, um, kind of that core activity zone and multi-use field, and some of the ball fields to the southeast. Um, let's see, so we're also adding some parking to the north off Golfie Road, and we've expanded, um, the walking trails to encircle the entire park. And then towards the very south, we're relocating the tennis courts to, um, just north there, near the existing parking to accommodate the future, uh, Public Works expansion. And the basketball court also got relocated as well. So we have, let's see, renovations of some of the shelters. They did just look like they needed a structural evaluation, if nothing else, and a new paint job. Um, and that would be in our recommendations. Let's see, the skate park, definitely revitalizing that and making it a new, um, fun, exciting place to be. And of course, being mindful of all those other principles for park safety and security that we talked about. So any comments on municipal park, or I can also move to golf, the Golf Course Park, which might, um, make a little bit more sense to why we did these renovations.
Madam Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Melissa, are we allowed to move the basketball courts and tennis courts? At one time, we were going to relocate them, but we were told we couldn't involve those because they were building them for some kind of grant. Are you familiar with that?
That's something that I'll have to check into, um.
I believe the time's expired.
Yeah, I, I believe that time would have expired by now if that was a, I can't imagine that it was something in perpetu-, you know, perpetually. I just can't imagine that, so.
You know, Maxie?
But we can.
L W C F? It's in perpetuity.
Oh, it is?
L W C F is. Um, it doesn't mean you can't relocate things. You would need to revisit the agreement because this is also two different parcels of land. So we probably need to revisit that before, um, this recommendation were.
Well, it looks like if we put it back, it wouldn't matter, but.
Right.
I don't know the, what's that called, Maxie?
It's L W C F Land and Water Conservation Trust Fund. Um, and it is in perpetuity, and, um, it's really just trying to preserve whatever land is dedicated for recreation is recreation. Um, so there's, and there's ways around it, too. But it's probably something we just need to understand.
Yeah, we need to pull the agreement.
Please do, because I wouldn't want to get us into something that we couldn't get out of.
Now, the basketball court is not being moved, is that correct?
I think all that part of.
It's rearranged over there. They're proposing to rearrange. Yeah, rearranged, so they're, they're.
Sometimes those grants and things are nice to get, but they tie your hands. Thank you, Rachel.
Sure.
I thought I'd mentioned it while, through my mind.
I think it looks good, I mean, my, some of those guys playing basketball might get hit by a ba-, uh, tennis ball once in a while.
Nah, it'll keep them in line.
You gotta keep it inside the fence.
There's always that one.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Rachel. That existing area that's, that's there, you don't have anything identified, is that just going to be green?
Um, this is existing vegetation?
No, not there.
This baseball field.
Yeah, right there.
Oh. Um, actually, imagine this isn't here, and you guys have the revised concepts. So these are repurposed and multi-use fields. And these two remain the.
Baseball.
Baseball.
Okay, so two fields stay there.
Yes.
Well, actually.
There's four.
Well, there's four fields, that's where, yeah, that's what I'm looking at. Okay, so these four stay there.
Yep.
Okay. Got it, thank you, Rachel.
And one thing, if you don't mind, if you look on the revised one that you have, you can see there's a football field layout at an angle right here. So it will still be used as a multipurpose for an angled either football or soccer, you know.
Well, it's multipurpose, yeah.
The baseball fields aren't going away.
Yeah, that was my, that was my main question, was what was actually staying in the footprint.
That's why we took that off, because I knew, you would think that. So I said, take that square off, so.
Any other comments or thoughts on this?
It's a pretty good conceptual plan to consider, Rachel.
Thank you. Okay. So we have two concepts for the Golf Course Park, and, uh, they differ very, very slightly. And the only place they differ is the core of some of the baseball fields. Um, the genesis of the baseball fields and proposed wagon wheel is, one, the existing demand and popularity of baseball and the history of baseball here in the town. Two, the requests by community members and leaders that, and staff, that there be a competitive place with updated fields for youth to play baseball and to possibly host tournaments. Um, this is a large piece of land, you can do it all here. And with repurposing the municipal park, Fields One and Two, with some multi-use fields, the splash pad, the all-inclusive play, we're addressing the needs of the community, the things that they asked for in the P I R and some of the other survey results and community input meetings. Um, and then we're dedicating a, a portion of this site to improving, uh, and providing new athletic fields for the community, baseball fields. Um, so I'll show you the difference, and then we'll go through the rest of the park because there's lots of other elements aside from baseball at this park that we want to talk about. The biggest difference, so if you see in this wagon wheel, right here, we've got a grandstand. And so this field would be, um, a, a larger tournament field for some sort of semi-pro, um, or traveling teams to play at. Parking is in this quadrant, so really we have three fields in this concept. And the next concept, the only thing that's different is you have three large adult fields and one youth field. No grandstands. So one, the first one would serve some sort of outside traveling teams. Uh, you would lease your field, that field to them. And this one would be just for, um, the town's recreation program. You could still have some sort of travel team practice here, or leave some kids as you like, but primarily for the needs of Maxie and his, um, baseball program. We also have a, um, multi-use event lawn here in a warm-up space. We really promote the concept of a park within a park. So when people go to tournaments or practice, moms, dads, brothers, sisters, whomever, aren't always focused on baseball. What do you, what do the people who aren't engaged in baseball do when they have to sit through a day-long baseball tournament? And so we want to concentrate some other activities in the core of, uh, the, the baseball area. So we have a play area here, um, we've got this molded purpose open event lawn here. We've got some restroom buildings in the core, parking is just up here and here. But I don't want to focus just on the baseball aspect of this because it's a very small part. Um, I'm gonna use this concept to kind of talk through the rest of the features of the park. We gave a lot of consideration to the environmental features. We have a lot of sensitive habitat, come on, really cool, uh, gum swamp down in this area to lots of, um, wetlands, natural areas. So we're protecting and enhancing all of those. This is going to be the main park entrance with a secondary entrance down here. We're recommending a rounded out. And this is really just some sort of, um, main entry focal point or feature. So when you ride into the park, you see this kind of iconic structure that says, you are in Hope Mills' newest, fullest park. And maybe it has something to do with the history of the town, your culture. Um, we can hash out details of that when we get into construction drawings. Um, if you're headed this way, you're headed to either, um, here, which is going to be a twenty thousand square foot footprint or forty thousand square foot Recreation Center with gym space, classroom space for arts, performing arts, um, additional basketball courts for all the programs that are current, they can't be served. Um, we have additional parking, and this is going to be a sensory garden and open lawn. So the sensory garden really appealing to, um, those special populations, to the veterans, a place where people can come and relax, have a little respite, be out in nature. Adjacent that, we have another all-inclusive play area here. And your geography kind of falls this way, so you have some really beautiful views looking over here. So we'll have a picnic shelter here, it's associated kind of with this, um, central core, almost like a healing space. Um, let's see, this is a natural swale that's already catching a lot of your stormwater runoff. Um, and there's a small existing pond here. So if you would like to see some sort of pavilion shelter here that overworks kind of an enhanced stormwater feature that would take, uh, runoffs from all your impervious surface, filter them here, it's kind of a rain garden and a sculpture area, um, and outlet into an expanded stormwater pond here. And through this entire area, we'll have a series of walking trails, both natural surface and hard surface, asphalt or concrete. Uh, as we get down towards, well, let's take the second entrance. We want to rehabilitate this, um, upland here as pine savanna. And so we're trying to create this nice transition between these residential communities here. We're certainly concerned about what's going to happen at this park, how active is it going to be? How much traffic is there going to be, what kind of lights are there going to be? So we're creating this really nice pine savanna here to act as a buffer and a transition between these residential communities into the heart of the park. Um, and through here, we also have a trail kind of meandering, so people can start to learn and be educated about the different plant communities and eco-zones within North Carolina, uh, this one being a high-savannah. And so your secondary entrance here, um, we wanted separate access specifically for emergency vehicles for anyone who's not interested in all the baseball stuff going on over here, all the high-intensity athletics. So those folks have an opportunity to either come here to this core, this kind of healing sensory space, or they have an opportunity to go down, um, to the creek access point. And so down here, we do have, um, ADA parking, and hopefully, we need to look at the details of constructing this, but hopefully, a, um, ADA creek access point here. Along the way, more ADA parking with a picnic shelter. And, um, this would also be an expanded pond, but a sensor trail. So we're kind of mimicking the sensory garden here with a similar experience here. This would absolutely be an ADA-compliant trail. And this would again be another experience, um, tailored specifically for people with PTSD, um, special needs, maybe someone with autism where they really need these quiet, calming habitats and environments, and also a learning and education opportunity. Um, then we have a boardwalk here. This goes through, um, a series of wetlands. And so from both a preservation and also a permitting perspective, we want to do boardwalks across any wetlands so we don't have impacts. So we've got two boardwalk sections, um, and then of course, you know, a large, large trail just down that really, um, meanders all the way around the baseball up here. So loop trails are really popular in parks right now. You want to be able to show people, what is a mile leap, how much distance have you gone? So loop trails are really popular in parks right now. You want to be able to show people, what is a mile lead, how much distance have you gone? They want to hit their steps. They want to get their Fitbit goals. So we have lots of inner loops and different difficulty trails as well. So maybe not all of them will be ADA accessible, but certainly we'll have to have some marked loop trails that are ADA accessible. Others that might be natural surface, and others that might be a little bit more difficult, but still paved. So that really is the extent of the plan. Oh, another big component. Sorry, I almost forgot you. We're showing a YMCA. The Y M C A in the event that the town does want to partner with YMCA to provide some sort of aquatics. You would need to cross this property and this land, which might be a future connection. You show it as a point here. I don't think this is wide enough for access out onto Golf View. So there are some questions about whether this access point is actually feasible, since I think this is quite a bit more of a here. But we are showing this in a future connection that may be some sort of a decent through this. Of course, that would be in partnership with the Landowner, so we're not showing it as a. I think that covers it. So any questions about either of these two concepts? Again, the only difference is really the concept A supports a higher-level tournament play and grandstand and one less field. And this one is more of a youth tournament setup with four fields.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Two things. Both those private owners?
No, the YMCA.
The YMCA and the J and M.
Yeah, the one in, the one in between the YMCA and that is a private owner.
And, and someone else owns the mineral rights of both of those properties, so.
The what rights?
Mineral rights to the property.
Mineral rights. I haven't heard of mineral rights.
Basically, you know, like the dirt, if they want to dig up, they can dig up a certain portion of it whenever they want.
Oh, okay.
But that is something that, to take an, so we're changing, looking at, basically changing the footprint of the municipal park in conjunction with what we would do at the golf course. How much does something like this cost?
We will be providing a cost estimate as part of our final deliverable. We wanted to get a thumbs up on one of the two concepts before we put numbers to it. But you're, it depends which concept you went with, obviously. If you're putting grandstands in, that's going to be significant, it's going to add cost.
How, like, approximate?
Um, this is.
Because you're doing two, basically you'll have to do almost simultaneously two parks, because you'll be changing your sports layout for the municipal park.
Yeah, I mean, that park needs renovations anyway, so it would be part of the larger set of renovations. This is probably, and you could phase this as well, but this is probably a $10 million park.
Question for you also. Brower Park?
Yep.
Was that considered as far as anything needing to be done there? I know it's not on either of these, and that doesn't, you don't have to answer. I was just throwing that out there, because that's a couple of baseball fields also. But the, the thing with YMCA that I'm familiar with is that they're looking for road frontage. Where they are is not where they want to be, because that would be, be difficult to get back there.
Yeah.
And it currently is difficult to get back there, so would there be, if, if, we're hopefully going to consider a discussion with the YMCA, they've come before us. Would there be any way of them being put so that they would be a part of this plan? So they wouldn't be back where they are? Because their concern is, they have an easement in there, and then they do have 20 acres, but that 20 acres, basically, right now, is used for soccer fields. It's not, it's not feasible to put a structure back there, because not only parking, but then it's not, you don't see it.
Right, absolutely. I think, you know, if that's something you're considering, then perhaps it's a, it's a joint-use building between the town and the Y, and the Y's providing aquatics, and the town is providing some of the other classroom space, gym space, basketball courts. And actually, I misspoke, because a building like that in and of itself is eight million. We just toured one in Gardner, and for the downstairs basketball courts and the upstairs walking trail, it was an eight-million-dollar project. So you add aquatics onto that, and I don't know what the Y would be willing to contribute to construction, and all that would need to get worked out with them as a partner. But I think it's a great idea to put, have the Y be a partner on the golf course property.
The, and I don't know, I'm just speaking, because looking at the plan, but where the, where you're showing the, the building, you're the sensory garden.
Yep.
I don't know if, if that would, is that the building you're talking about, that you're looking at having classrooms and space in it?
Mm-hmm.
Would that, would that be a feasible site? For a partnership with the YMCA?
It would. So the one thing that we'll want to consider a little bit, your topography starts dropping off significantly after, you know, right about here. So we try to keep anything flat up on the flat piece of the site to minimize your site grading. And so we, this, this footprint is actually going to get bigger. And so we would just want to make sure we're tucking in the parking and the building as far this way as possible. So we would have to obviously revise this, probably provide additional parking in a larger building to accommodate both a Y and a rec center space.
Madam Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
How many basketball facilities are in that building with meeting rooms?
Um, I think that's yet to be determined, so the first thing you would do when you undertake development of an actual rec center is what we call a programming study. And you would look at the program demand for basketball or other programs, and then you would work with an architect to develop kind of a floor plan and how many square feet you would need. The one in Gardner that has, I think it's got, I think it's got like eight courts. It's got a number, six or eight courts and a walking track upstairs and some offices and classroom space. I want to say that one's 40,000 square feet, and so we'd want to show this at two floors, so a 20,000 square foot footprint.
I know, right now, we're using a lot of the school facilities.
Right.
And I would like to see us have more gymnasium, but I'm not sure there's room over here for.
Yeah, and the dependence on the school system, while it's a necessary and great partnership, you know, anything can happen at any time, and so getting some autonomy for the department is important to the longevity of your programs.
And, and the second thing is, I don't want to upset anybody, but I'm not in favor of sharing any land with anybody, or giving it away, or selling it, or, or partnership with. I don't mind doing a partnership, but I don't want, my view is, I don't want to do it on our land. If we want to do it on their land, maybe we can partnership, but that's just my personal opinion.
Commissioner Legg?
Yes, ma'am.
If the Y has already a building plan, and have already built that building that has meeting rooms, gym, and aquatics in it, and they're willing to partner with us, that would also mean that we would save a good deal of money, because a lot of the work has already been done. And I know they're currently building one, I'm not sure where, Hendersonville? I say that, but I might be wrong. And I saw an article in the newspaper about, they're called sand hills now, because they've done something out of Ramsey Street here. But that would, might be cost-effective for us, because we would get the building, and then the way they work the partnership is then they lease the structure. They help, they help, no, we lease it, they pay us. Like, right now, they're leasing the meal space for the Y. They would help partner with us to build it, and then they lease it back from us. But there's all kinds of ways you can partner, and that's why I believe that that would get us this building that's here, but we'd probably, to get the space that you would have, the pool and all those other things, could maybe be turned or shifted over to that area of coming in for the, and I don't know, where it has the main entry feature, right, if that building could be shifted up there, I don't know what the topography looks like. But my thoughts are, if there's a way of partnering, at least to, to talk to the YMCA, because that would save, that would mean we would get more, and we would also have their input help pay for it. And it's not giving away land if they're going to help us by giving us swim pools and additional gym space. I do, I would like, I would like to the board to consider, at least talking to them and see what they can do, because they partner now with a lot of other places, and it's been very successful. And it also acquires a lot of funds from donors. They can get donations quicker than we can, because of the big corporations and businesses that support them. And I know we said we'd wait till the plan came back, but I think at this stage, if we are going to consider making a committee up with the Y, it would be a perfect time to consider that, since there is a building on this site that could be expanded with a partnership with the Y. And also, if we brought in the concern with the county commissioners and the school system, how this could be used for the high school swim teams, that might be some funding we could get from them also to supplement it. And so instead of us having to foot the full bill. But again, that's your decision, but we're at that stage where money's going to mean a lot to what we can offer.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things they did talk about during the Parks and Rec meeting, the YMCA, was that they're going to charge monthly dues for people to use their facilities, so essentially, you're joining a gym or a, an aquatic center. So I think it's going to be a hard sell to say, you're going to place this on our, on your property to the people, because it's their property, and then we're going to charge you $36 a month to use it. And, um, I, I just, I think this is a beautiful setup, the way it's done here, but, um, I just, I think that would be a hard sell.
Is there any flexibility with the, and I don't know the details of the partnership or how the Y usually runs this, is there any flexibility with?
They're just asking to talk to us about it. They haven't given us any ideas of, other than just what happens, but they're, currently, I know Commissioner Larson is aware of this, currently, they're offering their programs down at the meal. They've been in Hope Mills, I think, 19 years, been very successful, and they haven't taken away from our programs, because they offer, they've served a different need, and that, what would happen here, I think, is we'd have to work out those details. Plus, they do all the staffing, so you take, you look at how much that would save the town having to staff a facility, if we could partner with them and use, use it without having the town have to pay things. I think it's worth, Commissioner Larson, I think it's worth at least talking to them.
I don't have a problem, I mean, I, I know they've been before the board, you know, about four times now with this, but, and, and I don't mind listening to it, I just, I mean, I did hear it with the Parks and Rec. I'm just, to me, I, I think it's a hard sell. Only because I've been a member of the Y and I didn't stay there. I mean, but that's just my opinion on it. I mean, they do have, I know that some of the things that I've read that, you know, the schools are charged a lot to use the pool, and that that was one of the reasons they were hoping Hope Mills was going to basically open, what they were thinking was going to be a more of a public pool, not a membership, monthly membership with a contract. I certainly don't have a problem listening to them, I, I, at all, along with, with everyone. I mean, I think we want to listen to all avenues, still, yeah.
Well, I even like the idea that she's got over here, that you could have a, with the, the grandstand, and you could have a baseball field that could be college-level tournament-type ball. That would be something, too, that we've had somebody come before us and, and mention that they would be interested. So my thoughts is just, if there's some ways of getting some monies to help us offer more for our citizens, that we ought to take a look at that. I think that's what's happening in all municipalities, is they, as they partner, they come up with funding, and then the structures are the towns. I mean, they're not going to, they're, they're partnering with us so that we can have more in Hope Mills.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to throw a few comments in, if you don't mind.
Yeah, yes, sir, it's your turn.
Oh, it is my turn.
You got the floor. Yes, you haven't spoken for a while.
All right, Rachel. Well, I had to be excused there for a little bit. I had a little bit of early coffee that just, well, anyway. All right, Rachel, you want the good or you want the bad?
I'll take, I'll take them both. It's all in delivery, just remember, it's all in delivery.
I know, I know. I look at both of these, and, and there's been a tremendous amount of work put in them, I do. And I want to say something about, through this entire plan, you've put partner and partnership in here on just about all pages. That's a good thing, because partner, the word partnership's not a dirty word. It's a, it's a, it's a prosperity word, but it has to be used right, for the needs of all the community, and not the needs of the one. I like the way that you've got this laid out. My concerns of this, and I'm just going, I'm just going to tell them, and I know I'm going to upset Commissioner Legg, so I'm going to try to be as friendly and kindly as I can with what I'm about to say, is that, how many acres first does this entire plan take?
I can show.
Either A or B. How many acres?
I want to say 98, but I can tell you for sure in just a second. 91.95.
The number-one amenity from, from our community is an aquatic center. Not only from Hope Mills, but, and, and the mayor will probably agree with me, across Cumberland County. There is nowhere in Cumberland County, right now, that there is any plans to construct an aquatic center.
Yep.
None. And I mean, an aquatic center that will benefit nine months to 99 years old. Students, seniors, every, anybody and everybody. I say that because there's a tremendous amount of interest in aquatic center. And I look at this 90 acres, and I don't see an aquatic center. I, let me finish, Rachel. Thank you. I don't see that. I see, I don't see it anywhere here. I look at these ball fields, and I look what's around these ball fields is residential, all up and down Golf View. On the back side, there's a subdivision that's all residential. And those ball fields concern me, because this is such a residential, that's one. Two, on the other half of this, we've got a lot of passive stuff that you have in there for a lot of accommodations for various populations of folks. And, and that second half is laid out very, very nice. It really is. I mean, there's, there's some blueways, there's greenways, there's, this is a really good footprint. If I was to look in the middle and go left, it's pretty good, because of the slope. That's why I asked about the early one, the earlier footprint in the municipal park, is that we're leaving some ball fields there. My question here would be, instead of the multipurpose field in the municipal park. Why can't we construct the, before, the wagon wheel there? And have the multi, multipurpose park where this is here, along with an aquatic center. Now, why? Is because that would be a much quieter environment. For the surrounding communities of all the residents that live here, up and down Golf View and on the backside. In that subdivision. I'm thinking of them, I mean, and we were trying to put grandstands and baseball fields and, that's a lot of noise. And. A golf course. Now, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that we don't need baseball fields, Commissioner Lake. I know you're gonna, well, I'm, I'm.
I'm good.
I just think that we've got an existing land that's there, that's here now. Right behind this building, right out there, that does need a lot of work. And I just envisioned, if we're gonna do the wagon wheels, why don't we do them here? And your concept that you have. For your multipurpose is an excellent concept where that, where those wagon wheels are there. It really is. Because we do need multipurpose fields. A lot of community, a lot of folks in our community want soccer fields and they really want multipurpose fields. And you saw that in the surveys. I see that. I hear that. From folks. But what, but where are we gonna put this aquatic center? Because we, we don't own the YMCA land. They do. You, then you're gonna have to somehow get to it over somebody else's private property. And I'm not against listening to the YMCA. In fact, I think the mayor's probably got the right committee together. If we're gonna do this, that's the way you're gonna do it. You're gonna have to partner with somebody to bring in some money. Cause they're not, they're not cheap to do the right one, a very good one. That won't benefit everybody in our community but our high school swim teams. And there's an entire Patriot League that would use this. And Cumberland County schools would, would jump on this in a minute because they've all been kicked out of FSU. Number one. Two, Jack Brett has to go to Laurinburg to use their pools. So instead of the, the wagon wheel concept that you got here. I'd like to see us use the multipurpose field and the soccer fields there. And look at somehow putting an aquatic center there, on our land. As, as part of us. And I think that's the direction we go in. And if we've got partners that wanna go with us, they can. But it's gonna be on our ground. Because it's our park and it's our community and it's for our citizens. That's my good, that's my bad. Now, before we finish, let me make sure I got this right. Now, because you got another part to go, you got the Partif grant, so I gotta save my questions for that. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I gotta save my question.
Next. Mr. Edward, anything? Mayor, right here?
You good?
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, and I apologize a lot. I've been. I was in a bad way last week and I'm still on antibiotics and my sugar's off the chart. So I'm just, if I'm, I don't have my A game. We got about a C game tonight, so I'm just doing the best I can. But, um. Yeah, I'm open-minded and, um, and we have put together, uh. A team to look at the partnering with the YMCA, but, um. And I agree with Jesse on the, you know, I think it's highly a contingent thing that the YMCA is gonna get their. Be able to do what they gotta do over there with limited access. I mean, I raised, Josie and I raised our children right behind Rockfish Elementary School. We heard the ball fields going and, you know, they'd walk to school, we'd walk to the park. Very familiar with this neighborhood of Golf Acres. And, um, it's a very, very much a family-oriented neighborhood. Um. You know, in Fayetteville, they just had the big bond reference, um, building a great big balls, baseball field. Baseball stadium venue. And, uh, but they still charged you get in the gate, they charge for parking. And probably at the end of the day, truth be told, taxes are gonna go up in Fayetteville. And. At the end of the day, I, I still think the citizens should decide. The citizens definitely want aquatics and I agree with them. And I have been preaching too, for a long time. Of that, the three, the three major high schools here and any other high schools that wanna participate, be great for them.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it would be great for the Y. I know the Y. Uh, handles some things for the city of Fayetteville with their pools. Um. I don't know if there's maybe. For instance, if, if an aquatic center or multipurpose center would cost twenty, twenty-five million, if the Y wanted to kick in a third. If we could do a bond referendum for the two-thirds or whatever. If that bond referendum fails, we just kick it to the curb because. If the citizens don't wanna end up paying for it in the long run, we probably can't get there, you know? Uh, we can do so much sponsorship, we can do so much. Grant writing, so much fundraising. End of the day, uh, on the long term, maybe ten, fifteen years from now. Debt retirement's gonna come from tax increases unless we get quick appreciation of properties, do all these amenities. And we will get some, but it'll take a while. Um, just some technical things, uh, you have a kayak launch on the Blue Way, back to my kayak, kayak launch.
Yeah, yes.
That's there, right?
Yes, yes, it's there.
Yep.
Yep.
And, uh. And, and also taught my son to play on this golf course because it was, uh, very reasonable. But, uh. I think he actually hit it down the fairway and I hit it over there in those pine trees. He called it pine.
Savannah.
Yeah, I, I recall hitting a golf ball over there on the other side, but, um. I don't remember having quite that much space between the road and those, those tall pines. Um. So like in this design, does it take into account that Gulfview Road's gonna be widened? Um. And are you gonna take out a lot of them tall pines that exist there today?
It doesn't, this is actually a regenerative landscape, so it would be, we would be replanting anything that gets taken for the right of.
It'll have to be re, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That'd be a shame, but you do what you gotta do. Okay. Well, I think overall, I'm, I'm very happy with it. And I'm open-minded and don't mind looking at the different options as far as the aquatic center versus, uh. What you have right there.
Madam Mayor, I need to add one thing though. That multipurpose field concept that comes here, we also include a small amphitheater with that. I think you had a stage on the other one?
Yes.
Yeah. Because that's another one of the amenities that folks are looking. We're not talking about something huge. A lot of folks just want something like, like we have down in Festival Park in the city. It's just something that, just that size on an open multipurpose field. And I, I didn't wanna leave that part out because I, I know you had something like that on the municipal parkland. But it would work so much better here, you know, since the majority of this park layout is passive. Oh, thanks, Mayor. That's all I do have now.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Bellflower, do you make any man?
Thank you, sir.
I. I look to know that what I propose is an uphill battle. And, uh, if I just win part of it for the town. So that I can be satisfied, but I didn't vote to give any land to the lone survivor. And if I didn't do that, I can't give it to the YMCA. I'm sorry. It's just where I feel, but I'm. Open-minded about hearing, uh, all the ideas at the meeting.
I don't think we're saying give it any land away.
Not giving anything.
Not giving anything.
Nope. Nope.
I don't wanna lease it, give it away, sell it.
None of it.
Whatever.
It's ours.
But I'm open-minded about hearing all proposals. Thank you, Rachel.
Okay, other comments, other concerns, uh? So my question, my question, I guess, is. We've heard. Basically that. Commissioner Lake is okay with these two plans with the ball fields and a wagon wheel. Commissioner Larson. Um. Was okay?
I mean, I'm, I'm.
That's what I'm at, what I'm wondering is, are we directing Rachel now to come back?
I would have to agree that the wagon wheel probably should go over in the municipal park if we're, if we're gonna have one. Um, rather than at the golf course. Um, is there, I guess the question, is there, is there space there for, for that? I guess that's the other thing to look at, number, how you would do it.
Sorry, do you want me to respond? Um, that would be my only concern. I, um. Hear Mr. Bellflower's points completely and we originally had a concept that was just about verbatim what you suggested.
Thanks.
Um, but. We were struggling fitting. A wagon wheel at municipal park, especially with, to support parking and the crowds and the buses. Um, and with it being such a activity point for town events, instead of moving them here. We thought of repurposing that as an open lawn with amphitheater so you could continue to have your community events. We could go back to that original concept and share it. Um, I think we would really have to think seriously about if. We could fit a wagon wheel and supporting infrastructure, meaning, uh, parking and. Restrooms and your ticket booth and everything else.
I'm not necessarily against the mayor's recommendation. It's, it's twenty thousand. Square foot building. Could that, is that a two-story?
It's two and the footprint will get better, bigger. Um, the, that building has evolved throughout the day. In terms of, um, what we actually think it needs to be, so. Um, in our final concept, we would show that building with a larger footprint and it can absolutely account, accommodate. Aquatics at this park, um. As. We like to hear from staff and council that you're interested in being an aquatics provider. Before we show it on paper because it's such a large commitment, not only for the initial infrastructure. But also for the ongoing operations and staff and maintenance costs. Um, it's a big investment and especially one to do on your own, um, but.
Could have been add-on.
So, and that's the other thing. I think you'll see with the Partif request. Anything in the way of baseball or a aquatic center is probably a phase two. Um, I think the town would have to consider cost-wise. What they wanna spend in the next ten years and where the funding is gonna come from and phase this plan accordingly. A master plan is a working document. It is the big high in the sky. This is what we'd love to see happen. Um, you adopt this, but it can evolve and part of the master plan can be to complete a feasibility study with the YMCA. It can be to complete a space analysis study of a wagon wheel at municipal park versus here. It could be to undertake a market study to make sure that the market here can support. Um, athletic field for tournaments with a grandstand. You don't wanna invest in a ten million dollar park. If the market's not gonna respond and you're never gonna make your investment back. And I'll tell you, we've worked with three communities now that we've done. And now a market study and a pro forma and they have gone from a athletic complex to a community park. So there's a lot between this concept and go time. And I think keeping this as a vision is really important and getting it right is really important. But just know that it can evolve over time and that a lot more information needs to be gathered to really make some tough decisions.
Rachel, let's open the door though.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's open the door and see where it goes.
Yes.
This is a huge project we're talking about with the aquatic center.
Yep.
It's gonna take huge commitment and it's gonna take solid partners to realize this vision. But I think we can do it as a community. I, in fact, I feel confident and optimistic. That we can do this as a community if we partner it right and we package it right.
Could we get a, could we get a dedicated space, I'm sorry? Rather than reinvent all this stuff. Why couldn't we just get a, maybe a dedicated or future space for an aquatic center near that Century Garden?
Yep.
Uh, that would be the easiest and quickest thing to do. And then we have a dedicated area and then whatever resources we're looking at, we have a place. We have a place we can use.
What's the conceptual plan you're talking about?
Yeah, rather than her redesigning everything, why not just have a place over near the Century Garden like the mayor's talking about? But the, the future, a future aquatic center somewhere in that area.
Just an identified footprint?
Yep.
Identified footprint.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's all you have to do.
Not redesign all this.
Right.
No building, yeah.
That would be my recommendation to show the footprint required to support aquatics and gym space. With the parking.
Could, and could we, could we ask the YMCA for their footprint just to see what size footprint it is? Cause I know they have, they have a design, um, that is an aquatic center. They, they made a point of giving you all the. I wasn't at that meeting, but I know I heard they gave information about what could be in that building. So if they've got that footprint, then you could see where that, that aquatic center might fit.
Yeah, sure. Um, and the only question I would have is if it includes any of the classroom or indoor gym space? Um, and.
I think they had all of that included.
Well, Madam Mayor, that would be the catalyst to go ahead and form the committee, the exploratory committee, to do a feasibility study. To look at it.
No, I, we postponed it till this meeting, but if.
We assigned, uh, Commissioner Larson is the liaison, that's all we're doing, okay.
So, but looking at that committee, if we went ahead and that would give talking, the YMCA could be. Giving us more information, but the committee I tried to appoint that we postponed until now would be the, our. Uh, Commissioner Larson, cause she is actually the liaison. Maxine, we asked, uh, because he's works Parks and Rec acting director. Dr. Connolly would be contacted, but asked for him, a representative from the school system if he wasn't gonna do it. Uh, Glenn Adams, who is the county commissioner, was on our stakeholders committee back two years ago. And he would be someone from the county commissioners that would, would participate. And then someone from staff, and I didn't figure maybe Melissa or whoever she appoints. And then from a high school, I figured if we went to, uh, either of, all three of the high schools, one of their athletic directors that would be willing. I know Chad Barber from Southview came to our stakeholders meeting. He's the athletic director. But that way you'd have someone that was involved in all areas and then of course the YMCA. So you could have, um, Mr. Hout and one or whoever he would bring. So that would give me a, a committee of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, maybe eight, nine people?
I think we're there, Mayor. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we go ahead and approve the committee.
Okay.
I think we're there.
Okay.
With these conceptual plans, I think it's, it's, the time is now.
And then we can.
Because Rachel needs to know her direction so she can finish the, the entire comp plan, so I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to form a committee for, uh, partnership, for an aquatic center partnership discussion. Does that sound good?
feasibility study, maybe, yeah.
I believe that was a recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Right. So we could, um, and that's what we didn't vote on last time, if you'll remember. So, all right, all those in favor? Is this just to see if we can fit it in here? This is to talk about what we would, what it would look like if we could do it.
Share ideas.
Share ideas.
Somewhere near that century.
How much money they would come up with if they could help pay for it.
Before I, before we move on this, let me share with you, we have trouble. With wagon wheel or any kind of ball fields out here of collecting any revenue. For, because that's a public park out there. Over here, we could shut the, part of these gates off. And some people can go to the park area and others could come to the baseball complex. So. If we had that, we could start. Putting money back in our kitty to help. Pay for a, a swimming center or something. I just thought I'd mention that because. I just thought I'd mention that, because over here, we can't block it off. We, we've had to have tournaments and not charge anything out here before. And that's a lot of money lost.
Okay. All right, so I've got a motion on the floor to set up a committee for discussion, and that would be, the recommendation would be that Commissioner Larson would be the liaison representing the board, Maxie Dove, which he said last time he would serve, and then would contact Dr. Connolly with a request for either himself or someone from him, from the school board, then Glenn Adams, county commissioner, and then someone from staff, and then someone from high school. And I guess that could be, I would hate to say go, I say we'd go to Southview first, since Southview is actually what we consider inside Hoesmeers limits. But then Jack Britt, all three of the high schools have swim teams, so it might be that just the county AD would sit in on it. Mr. Aldridge, he might be, he taught at South...
He would be a good man.
He taught at Southview, and he also was, worked at Graves Creek.
We don't want to be president.
Yeah, the county AD would represent all of them.
The county AD instead of a high school represented.
Excellent.
And then as soon as we could get them to meet, then they could start, and then the YMCA would be Mr. Hout plus one or two from his staff, cause I know he's got other people that work with him on stuff. Does that sound okay?
And of course, Mayor, this, this, any of these meetings would be open to the public.
Right. And any, any commissioner that wanted to go could attend, but the actual commissioner that would be sitting on that committee would be Commissioner Larson, since she's on the Parks and Rec Committee, and possibly Sally Bailey representing the committee. But I think we, we need to let it be so that we wouldn't shut the door on those other members of Parks and Rec, Chairman of Parks and Rec might want to attend. You have thoughts on it, Ms. Adams, as far as which one of your staff you wanna go, or you just wanna think about it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, I have a motion to form this committee, and then we'll see how soon we can get them organized to look at an aquatic center. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, we can get going on that one.
Excellent, thank you, Board.
And just to be clear, y'all on board with...
I'm on board of it for this plan purpose only, not for necessarily partnering with anyone, but for the plan purpose only.
Not to redesign all this stuff.
Just a discussion.
Do the wagon wheel over here and...
Don't hurt the talk.
Nope, never does.
Well, and when we're there, when we're there, I don't know what the Parks and Rec's thoughts were on the Swamp Dogs, but if you look at the plan, that was the plan that is where they have the baseball field and grandstand that you could play, college-level ball on that one field, that would be the, I don't, I don't which act, which one it is, one or two. They were not very open to it. Huh?
Swamp Dogs aren't even in existence anymore.
They are, they are. And they've got a season starting right now.
Last I heard, they donated that field to...
They gave the field to STCC, but the park, they're gonna, the, right now Swamp Dogs are still there. Yeah, Swamp Dogs are still there. So, I don't know if that would be a consideration that you would entertain that also.
Well, they wanted us to pay twenty-five million dollars, didn't they?
No, they didn't. Again, it would be a partnership. They, they... They wanted us to build it.
Yeah.
And they leased it.
I think the important thing in all this is that we have a place for it.
Yeah.
It doesn't commit us, it doesn't make us commit to anybody. You know, we can do our own thing.
Yeah.
But we need to have a dedicated space.
Next.
Yep. Well, I guess we could just see if they're interested, and that would be an opportunity to have a discussion. I don't think there's anything wrong with having a discussion. You're not obligating yourself to anything, you're just seeing what the offers are that might mean money to help us. Yes, next, ma'am?
We need to...
I think we've covered all that.
Whenever you're ready.
Commissioner Legg has requested that this meeting go to at least nine oh-two. Can you make that happen? Oh, and Commissioner Edwards.
I'll turn it back over to, to Ms. Con.
We have just one more thing to talk about, and that's the Partif grant application that's due May first.
Yeah.
And so, Partif is a fifty-fifty match, so the town needs to commit to the matching funds. You can request up to five hundred thousand dollars, although I don't believe a community has actually been awarded the full five hundred thousand dollars in years. So, I wouldn't advise asking for five hundred thousand dollars for the max amount. It is a very competitive grant. We certainly have the components of the grant application fully complete once the master plan is adopted. You also need to make sure that you have the matching funds committed in a CIP. So, we need to decide how much you should request, make sure you have those matching funds dedicated in your CIP. Our recommendation is that this is the first phase of the park development, and this is the Partif request. We'll have to run a cost estimate if anyone, if everyone's in agreement of the scope to see what the total dollar amount is and what would be Partif and what would be your remaining amount. The reason that we chose these elements, which would be the entrance road and two ADA parking spots, the Century Trail, and a kind of restroom picnic pavilion, and then the second ADA parking spot with creek access. I spoke to your Partif representative, and she said two things that the community has been interested in lately are amenities for veterans and special populations and water access. And so, these, this portion of the plan, I think we can develop a good justification for developing these amenities, and a stronger justification, especially with the veterans community here, than some of the other program elements in the plan. And this is also what we feel is realistic in terms of completing a portion or a phase of the project within, you know, six hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand budget range. And we did recently complete a very similar project. It was a Partif award, and it is under construction now, and I believe the final bids came in right around that eight hundred thousand dollar mark. And it did have an ADA walking trail, a playground, a picnic shelter, and access drive, ADA parking, and a fishing pier. And so, it was a very similar scope to this, and we're, we're pretty confident in what the budget was and what it would take to complete this portion of the park.
One question I have, could, could that be used in the renovation of this park? Is there, is the Partif grant such that it could do some of these things that you've put together with the golf course?
So, my concern with that is that there, we developed the scope of the golf course park mast, site master plan to include all of the items that a Partif grant application requests, which includes an environmental review, site analysis, community input. So, we would have to redo a number of those scope items.
I think, I understand, thank you.
Would you have lodging included, these areas?
Probably not.
Is there be a dusted on thing?
I'm sorry?
A dusted on, whatever?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you done?
Yep.
I'll just say you had me at entrance.
Just so I'm clear, Rachel, on the Partif grant. There was some thought that the Partif grant would be applied to the Lake Park and Heritage Park. Is that not so?
So, I did ask your Partif representative about that, and based on the construction cost for the bulkhead being, so they're looking at cost in relation to recreational value, and the, since the majority of the cost is in infrastructure improvement, they felt that the application would not be as well-received as something like this scope that has more recreational value for a greater user base of the community.
Okay, that, that takes care of the Lake Park. I understand about the bulkhead, it's not an amenity, it's not qualified for the Partif grant.
Yeah.
And neither is the, the Salibi House, that's not going, or the parking either. The only thing left down there is just some, some various amenities to go into the park. So, that takes me over to Heritage Park. Can the Partif grant be applied for the development of Heritage Park?
It could. The challenge is the same with using the Partif grant for municipal park improvements, that we haven't completed a number of the scope items that I'm aware of, such as the environmental review. You have to have dedicated community input documented specifically for Heritage Park. You would have to have a separate public opinion survey. So, all the things we did for Golf Course Park in our initial scope, we would have to do over at Heritage Park to meet the requirements of the application.
Reason, reason I bring this up is because Lake Park and Heritage Park were the next two priorities.
Mm-hmm.
And so, now we're just gonna jump over those two and go directly to the golf course for the Partif grant submission. Is that your recommendation?
The alter, the other option would be to wait a year or add services to complete those aspects for...
Oh, no, no, we don't wanna wait a year.
I mean, you could, if you start immediately, you could probably do all of those things before May first, but you'd have to complete all of the elements required for the grant application that we completed for Golf Course Park.
Okay, so my last question here would be, under this Partif grant recommendation, earlier the Board had agreed to open up the golf course on a limited basis for nature walking trails that already exist there. That some of them need to be, there's, there's some development that needs to happen. Now, could at least the nature trails be opened up in association with the Partif grant? Can we add that?
And the parking?
Can we add that? And then my other question is, well, I see some of the parking, you've got two different parking pieces here, and then entrance and exit's gonna be on Golf View, so all that's gonna go into Partif Grant too, correct?
Yes.
All right. And with that said, is there any way we can include the nature trails? Because that would be a huge benefit. If we're gonna do this piece for the veteran service population, family members, which all this is a nice passive piece, very nice, then why don't we just at least include the nature trails in the Partif grant?
You can do as much as you can fund, meaning I think if you add, Partif is gonna wanna see everything ADA compliant. So, what you've got out there right now is not ADA compliant. They are a state agency, it is state funding.
And that's where I'm going with this.
Can I, can I interrupt you? Why, why is that when you, all the greenways are, some of them are crush and run, some of them are dirt, some of them are grass? Why would this, and they're in parks? I mean, I, I have twelve of them on my phone that are in North Carolina that are not ADA.
So, the law for ADA is that you must provide an equal or comparable amenity that's ADA accessible. So, if you have a non-ADA accessible trail, you typically need to provide an ADA accessible trail. Now, those parks could have been constructed well before the ADA Act was implemented. There's also no one who necessarily comes around, I mean, it depends. If you are having an ADA audit, someone will come around and check the cross slopes and the longitudinal slopes of your trails. If you have a resident complain or sue you, someone will come around and check the compliance of your trails. So, some of it's at risk, and is your decision. We can't take part in making a non-ADA compliant facility at this point after the ADA Act has been implemented.
And the, the, since it was golf cart trails, it was never really intended as walking trails.
That's correct.
That's, again, I know with ADA requirements, would be kinda like what we went through up here. You have, like where you've got ADA parking, I know that's so that they'll have access to that area and that park. And that's what we had to correct up here, because this was built way before ADA requirements. So, the ADA requirements have drastically changed, and they're more limiting as to what you have to do. But I guess the other question, I guess Commissioner Bellflowers, were you heading in that direction with, if, if we're gonna go forward with this, do we spend money on what we're doing?
What do you think?
Well, getting the, if we're getting trails ready to walk on them and spending money to do that, that's money that we're probably, unless we do the ADA requirements, and are we going to tear the trails up because they're not where they should be? I guess that's the best question I come up with.
Well, I'm just looking at the, I mean, the existing footprint of either Concept A or B has, has nature trails. Am I right, Rachel?
Yeah.
Why not include them in this Partif grant? I mean, we're gonna have, you're gonna, you're gonna have to develop them either now or then.
Right.
Why not include them now, on the front end?
Yep, yep.
And allow, and, and because look at the population that we're, we're targeting here, they could benefit from the nature trail.
Certainly, trails have the highest, what we call lowest barrier to entry, meaning most people of all ages, many ability levels and income levels can access trails. So, you will be providing the most benefit to your community with the Greenway Trail compared to a number of other amenities. So, I don't, I think it would be great to include those. I think your cost might exceed, you know, the eight hundred thousand dollars.
Let's open the door, Rachel, let's see where we go with it. Maybe we can't do the entire footprint, but let's see what we can do, because we have an excellent entry and exit of a, of a Blue Way.
Yeah.
I mean, I wanna keep your original footprint that you have here, but let's see what we can do.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with including, I think we'll look at the cost estimate, and we can include as much trail as you want, knowing that we're gonna, let's just say, you know, this needs to be a conversation, but if we request four hundred thousand dollars?
Yep.
The town has to match four hundred thousand dollars. If your bids come in at one point two million, you will either need to value engineer out some of the scope, or you'll have to come up with the difference. Partif does require you, so, so you might plan that in Phase One, but if you ask, if you say that's part of the Partif scope, you have to construct it. So, what you're better off doing is only asking Partif money for what you know you can afford. We can include in that Phase One, and, you know, put it out there, yes, Phase One could include things above and beyond your Partif request, but what we don't want is to get you into a pinch where you've committed to building nature trails and the bids come in higher than what you've requested and matched.
All I'm asking, Rachel, is to see where it goes.
All right, sure.
I mean, I mean, you are in agreement.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's fine.
I mean, you're the professional, so...
Yep, yep, we just wanna be careful about what the cost estimate comes in at and what you're committed under Partif for constructing and funding. I'm getting into the weeds, I'll make sure you're taken care of.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let me ask this question, if I may. Don, have we get, did we have a driveway break from DOT yet?
No.
No.
So, what we would need here would be three of them. Her proposal says three of them.
Yes, you would need driveway permits and approval from DOT, so...
DOT says that the best way to go about getting those driveway permits is to have a traffic study done by a licensed traffic engineer because of the amount of traffic that's on Golf View. The driveway on the left-hand side that is closest to the downhill slope going down Golf View, they said there's probably, will not happen because you can't get line of sight because people coming up the hill. They also said that in order to put any driveways there and on, off of Golf View, that we will have to put turning lane in the length of the property. And that is both left and right-hand turning lanes because of the... And that is both left and right-hand turning lanes because of the, uh, the development across the street.
And we have to pay for them, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so that would put us down to one entrance and one exit.
That, well, it depends on where they go.
Right, right only or something?
Yes, sir. Um, and his suggestion, and, and it goes back to the partnering, um, discussion that everybody's been having, is that in order for either the YMCA or the private property owner to do anything on their properties now, because they've been sitting as they are for over a year by the DOT regulations, if they wanna do anything different, they have to apply for and have a turning lane going into their properties as well. It'll be considered a change of use.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Amazing.
I had to talk to one of those guys a couple years ago.
Amazing.
Mr. What's his name, Burns, Greg Burns or something like that. I spoke to him, and he thought that the fairway drive, fairway course drive, that name of, whatever it is, that he thought that would probably be the best location to be able to put a red light. But this is the first time I saw.
Right, well, that would also be part of the traffic studies, signals would be part of that.
Yeah.
And would that be, again, the responsibility of the town?
Yes, ma'am.
Would have, the traffic signal would be ours too.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you know, they're getting rid of widen all that.
But it's.
If we can get it in, into them to get part of the function of.
We don't even have a driveway, how can they deny us a driveway? I mean, we don't even have.
We have to have a permit to put a driveway, yeah.
With a permit, yeah.
And that's part of the permitting process.
But I mean, they're not gonna, just to get a driveway. Well, we'll see them tomorrow too, they're gonna be there, so we'll get to talk to them.
Legally, legally, we can't go on the land right now unless we go across private property.
Well, Rachel, sounds like we have a hiccup.
Hmm, we need to, at least for, well, at least for Partif, we need to find out. Um, so, and usually, so with DOT, usually they require an increase in traffic counts of X before it triggers a TIA. And I think that.
Do they already have them?
Yeah.
You what, I'm sorry?
Their threshold is four thousand vehicles per day and their last traffic count is ten thousand plus.
But when you're adding a new facility, you determine, well, right, but you determine how many trips per day that facility is gonna generate. Where I'm going with this is for the phase one Partif, I don't think this is gonna generate enough trips per day and.
It doesn't matter how many additional trips per day. Right now, they're looking at just the current status. And current status for a driveway will require us to put turning lanes, left and right turning lanes into for the length of the golf course.
Really?
Yes, ma'am.
Rachel, can you seek clarification with this regarding what Don's saying?
Yeah, let's, let's.
Can you do that?
Offline conversation.
Yeah.
Um, because.
Yeah.
And would this not be something that we should direct the town manager to do?
In concert with her.
In concert with her, talking to DOT, I don't think each of us should be going to DOT.
Right.
Uh, because I think that's not our role unless we're directed to by the board.
We're not allowed to have conversation with them?
Well, I mean, but something, at this scope, I think you should have the staff do that so that the staff can bring back the information. It's not our responsibility to do the staff's job. And that, to me, that is a staff priority there to do those type of legwork. And, and I, and that's what, in the past, we've always directed staff to do the.
What's the timeline for the Partif?
One May.
One May.
One May.
Yeah, it's due the first of May. Um, we've got a lot of DOT contacts we work with, DOT regularly, so, um, you know, I think we can easily have that conversation and shoot them a concept and see what their thoughts are.
So the DOT director, he lives up there about where that lamp is at twelve, don't see him?
You wanna go get him?
We can, we can go out and.
Tell him we've got till nine oh two.
He can hear us out the back door.
Well, Rachel, I'm confident that the three of you, Don and Melissa, can engage in this and come back and give us either update this of what we can and what we can't do. Because, I mean, I don't want us to run out of time and wait another year.
Yeah, sure, sure.
I mean, if that's the only hiccup that we're looking at right now, we need to run this rabbit in the hole.
Yep, yep, we can do that.
All right. We need a slam dunk.
Um, I had, I just thought of one more thing that I would like to share with Meg if we have, if that's okay. Um, about the greenways too, there is a caveat in this ADA thing for parks that says if, if providing ADA accessibility is gonna compromise the recreational integrity or intent, then you have to provide ADA accessibility up to the point of that activity. So for example, rock climbing, it's very hard to provide, I mean, it's a special.
Well, Heritage Park, it's gonna be dirt trails.
Or, yeah, or something like that where, you know, the, the topography doesn't allow, and it's for, you know, natural hiking.
I walked that golf course on Saturday and I was sore. And I go to the gym six days a week and I was pushing a stroller and I, it was a workout. So, I don't know.
That's, that's the caveat.
Yeah.
But, um, I think in this case, they, and anyone would say you've got ninety-one acres, you can find a spot to put an ADA trail and grade it right and, so.
We are doing a lot of ADA, I guess you'd call it code requirement at Bra Park now.
Great.
For walkways and, and so forth and so on. We're catching up now from several years ago, don't wanna get behind again.
Anything else?
Rachel, I'm impressed.
Well, thank you.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will, uh, make sure we address any of those comments or requests in the final plan. Um, next steps are to present to the public and the Parks and Recreation Board these same recommendations with the edits that you recommended and prepare the part of grant application due May 1st.
Now, wait a minute, now, Mayor, hold on. We've, we've had, we've had a lot of discussion tonight about a lot of different changes between municipal park and the golf course. And then you, and then we've got some do-outs from DOT.
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible that we could look at another conceptual before? To, to look at it one more time as a board before we go any further? Is it possible to do just that?
I don't, I think Melissa and Drew, would that get funneled through you two to the, I don't.
If you could send it to us, then we would send it to them.
Okay, perfect.
That'll work too.
You're not talking about another presentation by.
No, I'm talk, I'm talking about the, the differences on the, uh, the maps that you, that we've talked about tonight.
Yep, yep.
That's the only piece, it's not this.
Right, we can just do the renderings only.
Yeah.
Cause the original plan was, once we're done with this part and then get the advisory board and then the public input, is to have the final, final at our budget retreat on March the ninth.
Got, I got that, but I.
That's what we're shooting for.
But we've had a lot of discussion about a lot of different thoughts tonight. And I just would like to have the opportunity to see them on the map one more time before we go that final, final, final.
Just do the renderings.
Rachel, I do have a question for you, um, for the.
This is board's in agreement.
The, um, Parks and Rec advisory meeting this month. Um, that is scheduled for the twenty.
Twenty eighth of May.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-fifth, Monday, the twenty-fifth, is that correct?
Twenty-fifth, yes.
Commissioner Larson. Um, so is that going to give you enough time? Our budget retreat is the ninth.
That's enough time, I, but I have a conflict that night.
Okay.
So we might have to talk about that date.
Okay.
I'm free, I think, any other night that week, but.
Commissioner Larson, do you think that they would be willing to change their, their meeting date to accommodate?
I.
Can we?
Maxie.
Can we poll them?
I mean, that leaves you the Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday left in February.
And were you wanting the, you wanted the public input meeting the same day, correct? Since we added this additional meeting?
Back to back, so.
So what would we do first?
We would probably do the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
First?
If we could do it like a four to six and then the public meeting after that and hope that the advisory board would stick around to help explain the plan to them. It would be an open house, so it's always nice to have support from the board members at the public input meeting.
Okay.
Also with that, Rachel, could you, could you have these on a nice board that can be displayed on an easel?
Um, yes, and actually, um.
On easels?
Everything that you're gonna see until the final, 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 um, are these sketches and will provide you with a really nice, high-level rendering that you can use for marketing purposes as well. So these are just still sketchy iterations. Um, and we'll probably have those at the public input just because we might be showing multiple concepts. We want the public to give input on what the final one might be.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
One of the questions that I'm, I know I'm gonna get is baseball scored really low and you're doing a wagon wheel. And we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna hear it from the people.
Yep.
What, what am I?
We have a space.
How did we get?
We have a space for a wagon wheel.
Yeah, I mean, but that's not what, I mean, that's not what was, baseball was very low.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it was really low. And so they're gonna question us why we're even considering a wagon wheel and, and I'm kind of.
That's a money maker.
Um, it could be, I mean, it might.
Right, and we talked a lot about that with staff and that is the reason we did municipal park renovations to make sure that we were addressing everything that the community is looking for in one of those plans and that the wagon wheel is really just, uh, renovating what the town already has and consolidating.
But you're moving it, so that's, that's where you're, you know, they're gonna say, you already have them over here and then we're gonna say, well, we're gonna redo that parking.
But we're not moving.
All the baseballs over here, but you're gonna have to tell them that, that you, you are moving some of the baseball over to the golf course. And I think that they're looking for a different.
Thought we were doing the wagon wheels in existing, isn't that the plan?
No, it, it, it doesn't, you said it wouldn't fit probably over at the municipal, no.
I, I can do a quick exhibit to see if it's gonna fit or not.
Yeah, that's what, that was my understanding.
My concern is that it's not gonna fit, but.
That's, I'm just, that's my concern is that it was something that, and every, one of the big complaints was that people were saying, we don't want any more baseball, we don't want any more baseball, it's enough.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna take this park and we're gonna put a wagon wheel, and we're gonna, they're gonna think we're cuckoo.
Some of the baseball fields would go away if this is.
But they're gonna say, why are you moving them from one place and over here? They're not, I'm, I'm, we understand it because we're often going through this, but they're not, you know, without hearing the whole.
And the ball field stand that we have right now, uh, and Maxie, I'm not gonna cut the Parks and Rec down, gonna do a great job. They are not the class of ball fields that we need to host tournaments to make money, revenue on. And we're always talking about how do we make revenue? That's a good way right there. I'm just gonna shut up, Madam Mayor, before I get everyone mad at me.
No, I'm not mad, I'm just, I just know.
This might answer some of y'all's questions about this. Um, and why the concept looks like this versus what's gonna stay at municipal and what's gonna be at Golf View. Cause we talked about this at length at staff level. And how many times have you changed these?
Yeah.
Over and over again? If you're doing a tournament, you can't have the outfield's face each other like that. Every one of our fields, the outfield's is right with the other outfield. So to do tournaments, you have to have the wagon wheel concept. So the batter's boxes are what are facing each other and the outfield's are the opposite side. We did look at doing a wagon wheel in municipal park. But the good thing is that the land is set with these angles and this, it, you can't, you can't put a wagon wheel here, they're all gonna be tiny fields. We need this side field in wagon wheel format.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
There'd be two of those.
Yeah.
It doesn't fit. The wagon wheel here, you'd be all the way at Town Hall parking lot. We tried to make it work, but the concept doesn't, I mean, she can try again.
That's what I'm asking for, Drew.
But it doesn't fit, so we thought.
That's what I'm asking for.
All our bits and vegetables are here.
It's not gonna work, so.
I don't think so either, but I, I believe those fields have to have.
That's what we did at the staff level, we've done everything that you've asked for.
Yeah.
Already and looked at it over and over again.
I mean, we told the citizens we're just replacing what we got, right? And we're still gonna have a place for an aquatic center. And that doesn't mean the, the wagon wheel comes before the aquatic center, that yet to be determined in the phasing.
I, I believe those outfield fences have to be a minimum of two twenty-five, Maxie, something like that?
You want them two twenty-five, ultimately you want them three hundred. If you've got fields three hundred foot, you can play anything from adult softball down to T-ball. Um, soccer is our second biggest sport behind baseball and softball. I guess, hopefully, you're, you know, pro baseball or if you don't play baseball, I guess it's, it's not priority. But for instance, we're, not just the travel ball, but the Dixie, Dixie softball, Dixie boys organizations that are part of, we're eligible for district tournaments, state tournaments, World Series. Longerton just hosted World Series, seventy-five teams all over Southeast United States. The economic impact, they led to Fed hotels, restaurants. Uh, we had two teams from Louisiana, one team from Georgia that were staying in Fed while they came here, um, and practiced. Um, also assured, this, this would kind of address the, what the condition that our fields are, we're not really eligible, we're not gonna get any of those tournaments. The, one of the driving reasons for going the wagon wheel there is kind of a win-win. We get the wagon wheel that we need and it would also repurpose and we would get the soccer fields. So field one and two are not set up at all, we couldn't do tournaments there. But it's already fenced in, there's already lights, we're working on the irrigation now, it's getting. So we, we can still do soccer tournaments out there, we can run our soccer program. Again, soccer is our second biggest sport, we do not have soccer, our teams are practicing on the outfield of small baseball softball fields. So, you know, again, that was kind of the reason why I wanted it there, I believe, cause it would repurpose over here. Um, soccer fields, football fields, we don't have a football field either. Fly, kite, lacrosse is coming, lacrosse is a big sport as well, so it would open up a lot of multipurpose space out here.
Well, Madam Mayor, my question here then would be, if you do this and you put the aquatic center in here and then you still got that other facility, how you, how you gonna, uh, establish the parking area? Where's the parking area gonna go to support that volume, that volume?
Well, the.
What's that?
Uh, we would basically expand this parking area. This parking area serves this and here, um, we would expand this parking area. I think you'd have an easier time expanding this parking area to serve this building than expanding parking at municipal park to serve tournaments.
I don't know, I don't see it, but, okay. Because, I mean, you've got, if you're gonna do a wagon wheel of tournament ball, you're gonna have a big gym complex there and an aquatic center, all co-located on the same ground. And I just, I don't see the parking to support all three of those, I just don't.
You've got.
I walked that golf course a thousand times, I don't see it. I, it's just me, Rachel, I.
So it's a ninety-acre parcel, I can tell you what.
I think we're crowding too much in, I don't think we're gonna have enough adequate parking to, to support all three of these. So you gotta pick and choose what you want there.
We'll just build a parking deck like that, go and charge your money. And, and we'll cut back, uh.
So you've got three times the acreage at this park than you do at municipal park. And at municipal park, you need parking to support the wagon wheel, the rec center and Town Hall.
I mean, just look at Riddle Stadium alone, the stadium and parking is about fifteen acres combined. And I, I'm not making that up, it's, it's, that's the right measurements. It's about fifty, and that's just one stadium.
Their maximum attendance is what, eight thousand? Uh, somewhere near seventy-five hundred?
That's why I think our better bet is to use the parks we have in the municipal park, I just do. In some configuration, the parks we have here is the ones that we need to re, is, we need to, to fix those, I just do. need to, to fix those, I just do. And use this as a multipurpose field, put an amphitheater there, use the, the space that we have there for the building and for the aquatic center. We'd have more than enough parking to facilitate all of that, we just would. And then again, it's the residential, we're putting ball fields in the middle of residential areas.
Well, make it Phase Three, and maybe by the time we get there, we'll know we'll have.
Maybe we'll be dead.
It's just, it's just my, it's, it's just my thought, I, it just is. I'm not against baseball or softball.
Sure.
I played softball a lot, a lot of times in my youth, I even went to the World Series in Plano, Texas.
I think we need to.
So, I'm not against that.
Well, I think when you have the public hearing, that what's gonna happen is the people living Golf View Acres, that their homes back up to that area, the lights and the noise.
You're gonna see all of that.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what I think you, that, that, that group would be the ones that would be the ones to contribute to the discussion.
Yeah.
Because they're gonna be, it's gonna change what, what they, yeah, what they have there.
I think a lot of people are not gonna wanna pay for ball fields.
Yeah.
I'd pay for it. I mean, I think that's, you know, you know, building is one thing, paying for it is a whole nother thing.
I don't know. But the public hearing will take your, I do agree with, um, Pro Tem about bonds too, though, because I think it should be something that the people have to be understanding that they're gonna be paying for it. It, this isn't something that's just falls out of the sky and it's there, it's.
Yeah.
I mean, we all have wish lists that, you know.
I think they're all successful, I think they're all successful, that I've seen, that.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't mind chipping in a little bit to get.
Yeah, and there's a, there was a survey question on that, and people, I don't think a parking record bond in North Carolina has failed yet. I do think all of your concerns are valid about how to present this to the public, and there are conversations we have had with staff at length, and we'll continue to give it some more thought and see, um, you know, how we can make better use of this space as well.
Yeah, I mean, travel ball is a lot of Sunday play, so they might have a, their Sunday dinner might be.
It's just, yeah, I mean, I understand because of the, the layout is the big concern.
Right, right. But we have to be able to tell that story to the public in a way that they're gonna support.
Yes.
The project, especially if you're gonna go for a bond.
Yep.
And that, that's the challenging piece of this project, so, and that might be a series of vignettes that show that we've gone through the process, that we've explored what it would take to renovate the ball fields here, and that there are space constraints.
Well, at least I was honest with you.
You have to get the showing hat on.
All, all of your points are valid in your, I completely understand your concerns, and they're all things that we've given a lot of thought to, so, um.
Well, then we're tracking.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, that's great, then we're tracking.
Yep, yep.
That's good.
I mean, not to get crazy, but you could build a three-level parking deck right there between the aquatic center and the wagon wheel, and eliminate two parking lots.
Just so the board knows, it is past nine oh two. Just so the board knows, it is past nine oh two.
I would see the clock.
And I gained over, so I don't care.
I know. I'm into it.
All right, anything else? So our, we're gonna try for.
So we just left you with a whole bunch of questions.
All right, February twenty-sixth, is that gonna be when we're gonna try to have the Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec, is that what we decided, twenty-sixth?
Maxie was gonna hold the Parks and Rec.
Hold the, mm-hmm. And if they'd be able to meet at four, is that four to six, is that what you're proposing? And then the public portion after that?
Yeah.
So we would have a special board meeting at six then, if you could come to the Parks and Rec deal morning to.
Yeah, I'll kill him.
I'm saying we're gonna have another one, I'm gonna hear twice.
You have to have a public hearing.
If we have a special board meeting, we'll be set up over there, or they might have